So that we have a recording of tonight's proceedings. So looks like everything's going. And attendees will come on as they come on. They're not allowed to participate in these meetings, but we want them to be know that we're aware that they're out there. And so welcome to those folks that are listening in on tonight's proceedings. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Commissioner Kofalas or to Commissioner Cho to lead us off on this meeting.
I just wanna say welcome to everyone. We do have a lot of items to address this evening. And I think Commissioner Cho Bob, I think we will wanna do introductions at some point. But to make sure everybody knows who's here. But again, I just welcome this opportunity to have continued dialogue on the various issues that are on the agenda.
To me. Maybe we should maybe the county commissioners would like to start introduce yourselves and then we can go onto the planning commissioners and then staff and and then Matt and his team.
Yes, Bob. Thank you. John Kofalas, Commissioner District One, a current board chair.
Kristen Stevens, County Commissioner, District Two.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm Jody Shy McNally, Laramie County Commissioner, District Three, serving all of Laramie County.
I'm Bob Choed. I'm the current chair at the Planning Commission and I live in the stout area near Horstuth Reservoir.
I'm Curtis Miller. I live in Loveland and I'm on the planning commission.
Commissioner Barnett.
I'm John Barnett. I'm the current vice chair. This is my second year on the planning commission and I live in the Fort Collins area.
Commissioner Barrick.
My name is Jordana Barrick and I am on the planning commission and just live north of Fort Collins.
Commissioner Doherty.
Good evening. My name is Sean Doherty. My 12th year on the planning commission and I live in the Pooter Canyon.
Starting with staff, that's all the planning commissioners I see. Starting with staff. I'll introduce myself real quick means I'm talking. My name's Matt LaFerty. I'm the principal planner here at Laramie County for long range planning efforts and I am joined tonight by Leslie Ellis. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Hey, everybody. Leslie Ellis, Community Development Director for Laramie County.
And Jen Cram.
Hi, I'm Jen Cram, Planner with Laramie County, assisting Matt with the long range planning efforts.
Mr. Threewood.
Hi, I'm Don Threewood, current planning manager for Laramie County.
Frank, would you like to introduce yourself?
I am Frank Hough from the County Attorney's Office.
Also, we have several consultants that are joined us tonight. Consultants helping us with land use code rewrite as well as consultants helping us with oil and gas regulations. So Matt, would you like to introduce you and your team? Matt Goble.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Matt Goble from Clarion Associates. Our firm is working with the county on the land use code updates.
Gabby.
Hi, everyone. My name's Gabby and I'm with Clarion.
Good. Austin.
Hi, I'm Austin Flanagan. I'm an associate with Clarion Associates.
Very good. Matt Surra.
Matt Surra, Special Counsel on Oil and Gas Matters.
Very good. So that's our team for tonight. I'm sure there might be a couple more planning commissioners that chime in as the evening rolls on. Maybe they're relate getting home or something, but we'll look forward to them when they join on. Tonight, we got a couple items. I think we have three items. We're gonna talk a little bit about where we stand with the oil and gas regulations that have been being processed for the last three or four months. We're also gonna be talking a little bit about some development standards that we're modifying with the land use code that were not part of the initial adoption process. As well as we're gonna talk a little bit about 1041 regulations and how we might improve those with recent code updates. And so Commissioner Cho and Commissioner Kofalas, is it okay if we kick off the hearing, the meeting at this point?
Matt, yes, but I noticed that Gary Green, one of the planning commission members has joined us. Perhaps we could acknowledge him, please.
Oh, that'd be great. Thanks, Commissioner Kofalas. Commissioner Green, we've all introduced ourselves. Would you take just a moment to introduce yourself?
Absolutely. Gary Green, Laramie County Planning Commissioner for nine months now. And just got here from another meeting. So thanks.
Busy person. Thanks for joining us tonight. All right. Well, with that, I think that the order we're gonna go in, we're gonna start with oil and gas and talk a little bit about what's going on with the oil and gas regulations here in Laramie County. And to help us along with that and what progress we've made is Matt Surra, our special counsel on this project. And I'm gonna turn it over to Matt and he has a presentation that'll probably take 15 or 20 minutes and then we'll have some conversation. Matt, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Matt. I assume that you can see my screen.
Great. Yes, sir.
All right. Well, um, this is going to be a whirlwind tour of the oil and gas regulation code amendments. This, uh, we've been working on this for a couple of months now and there have been a number of public meetings. We broke the different code amendments into three different sections. Each section probably deserves, um, you know, its own amount of time, but I'm gonna try to fit all of those sections in to this one brief presentation and then I look forward to your comments and questions. So just to step back for a minute, the schedule for the code amendment is, as I said, we're kind of in the middle of that process. June 4th, we released a draft for public comment. I'm gonna be taking public comments until the 28th of June. Obviously, we've got a this work session tonight. There is going to be a public open house next Tuesday night, June 15th. July 21st, we're coming back to the planning commission for a hearing and then July 26th, the Board of County Commissioners are going to be hearing this subject. Presentation that I'm giving to you, I wanna just briefly update the goals of this code amendment process to let you know what the my charge is and in the charge of the planning staff and city attorneys, county attorney's office. Little quick review of Senate Bill 181, which is one of the reasons why this is occurring. Then go into some of the areas that have been the focus of the amendment process being location requirements, protective standards and monitoring and enforcement. And then certainly I wanna hear your questions and direction. So going into the goals and objectives, the goal is really to protect public health, safety, welfare and the environment, including wildlife resources. How we're going to accomplish that is looking at regulations that exceed or align with the recently adopted common gas conservation commission regulations. Also analyzing other community regulations who have taken the opportunity to update their regulations pursuant to Senate Bill 181. Gathering input from interested members of the public and from the planning commission as we're doing tonight. Assessing input obtained and then developing that body and having it be considered by the Board of County Commissioners and the planning commission. Just to give you a little bit of background, Senate Bill 181 was a game changer for the oil and gas industry and for the ability for local governments to regulate this industry. Senate Bill 181 was signed into law in April of 2019. What Senate Bill 181 did was it gave clear direction to local governments that they had the regulatory authority over oil and gas and it ended any state preemption. It also reformed the common gas conservation commission mission to protect public health, safety and welfare and the environment. It required that rather than just to ensure that that was a consideration and is now the charge of the common gas conservation commission to regulate the industry to protect public health, safety and welfare. It changed the commission makeup and made for a professional commission of five full-time commissioners. That mission change rules were adopted November 23rd, 2020, after about six months of work and they took effect just this past January, January 15th, 2021. Just a point of introduction, I represented a number of entities in that rulemaking as I have in all the rulemaking since 2008. But representing everyone from local governments to school districts, community organizations and water providers. So just to give you a sense of the framework we're using, we're continuing the good work that was accomplished last year, working on this issue. We're looking at the same framework, frankly. Depending on a special review process from 6.4.2, which does state that the county commissioners ultimately can review application and deny a special review application in accordance with approval criteria. Or they can pass it with additional conditions. We're also adding something in that in the current draft, we're adding a special administrative review for some oil and gas processes light. I'll also say there's plugging and abandonment permit seismic survey operations permit and an oil and gas pipeline permit. Now, these are don't require the full analysis and frankly, the the procedures that are part of the special review. So as a special administrative review, of course, just is administrative review and and decision. The regulatory analysis that was required, that was requested by the Board of County Commissioners included a looking at state regulations after Senate Bill 181 and the mission change rules. We looked also at Boulder County, our neighbor to the the south. Commerce City, I have a special affinity with for because I worked with Commerce City and to develop the regulations and then of course Laramie County. And in doing that review, we found that the areas that I think needed the most attention because they were they're farther out of line with state regulations were setbacks from homes and alternative location analysis process. And then some of the best management practices and standards and planning documents. Moving into citing regulations, the zoning is is a tool that is available to the the county, as is the alternative location analysis and setbacks. And I wanna get into each one of those just briefly. First, in looking at zoning, because of Senate Bill 181, counties now have the ability to to zone the oil and gas industry like any other industry that occurs within the county. And looking at allowing for that oil and gas use in those zones that are listed there. Here's a map that was prepared by a Matt LaFerty that shows the yellow is where oil and gas can occur. However, the areas that are in white and in orange here are areas that would be prohibited because they are more residential in nature or they are current municipalities and the county doesn't have jurisdiction over oil and gas development within municipal boundaries. Again, we're looking at natural resources, forestry, agriculture, and and you can read them here. The alternative location analysis is an important tool that has been developed over the last 10 years at the common gas conservation commission and finally was properly put into regulations and a rule language just this past year. What it does is just ask the operator, the applicant to identify how they made the decision for choosing the location that they want to drill. Certainly, technologies have developed now that allow for directional drilling and even horizontal drilling where the oil and gas location, the surface location where the the only gas well is located can be as far as a half a mile or even a mile from where they're going to be developing those resources, a mile and a half below the surface. So it they do have more flexibility than they would have had even 10 years ago in developing oil and gas resources and finding a suitable surface location. And so this alternative location analysis that is being proposed is in the code is similar in almost every respect to what is required at the common gas conservation commission. I just, this is a common gas conservation commission map. Purple shows areas that have already been drilled. The green shows areas that have been approved but have not yet been drilled and light blue are those locations and horizontal drilling units that have been that have not yet been approved, that have been applied for but not approved. As you can see, the majority of the the current activity within Laramie County is happening in the the far southeast quarter of of Laramie County and we have some that is just north of Fort Collins. If you look at foot setbacks from from homes, I certainly there's going to be an impact in those areas that have the most homes as you would expect. And a 500-foot setback from homes, which is the current common gas conservation mission standard, is gonna prohibit a lot of oil and gas development in most, if not all, of the area that is in the southeast quarter of of Laramie County. If you expand that to 1,000 feet, which is what the decision was by Laramie County when they they put forward their current regulations. That reduces it further and the 2,000-foot setback from homes, which is now the common gas conservation commission requirement of further limits oil and gas development in that southeast quarter of of Laramie County. Just to give a quick thumbnail sketch as to how these are different, there's a 2,000-foot setback from schools and facilities. In the current draft, we're looking at the same requirement there. The common gas conservation commission has a 500-foot minimum setback from homes. That is a strong setback. And Laramie County currently has a strong setback of 1,000 feet, which is double the 500-foot setback and common gas conservation commission has a 500 to 2,000-foot setback where they will allow it under certain circumstances. Laramie County is using those same circumstances, but that definition is 1,000 to 2,000 feet. Again, not allowing any oil and gas development closer than 1,000 feet unless the homeowner themselves or the tenants and the tenants frankly approve of that use. Other setbacks are from water supply intakes or wells and we're looking at 1,000-foot, which is also the common gas conservation commission standard. 1,000-foot setback from parks and parkland, regional parks, trails and trailheads and 500-foot setback from all rivers and streams, which is a little bit more than the common gas conservation mission requires. And also really trying to limit any oil and gas development within flood plains. One of the areas that had not been addressed and can't be addressed by the common gas conservation commission and wasn't addressed in the current standards are reverse setbacks. So well, the gas development and some of the regulations are looking really at regulating the oil and gas industry and where they can be located and how that they're going to develop their resource responsibly. But the reverse needs to be true as well that there needs to be some limits as to what can be developed immediately adjacent to an oil and gas facility or an abandoned oil and gas location. And so taking the direction from the Board of County Commissioners, we're looking at a number of different phases and different types of setbacks. First, in the pre-production phase, that is where there has been an oil and gas location that has been approved, but it hasn't been fully drilled out. We're requiring that full 1,000-foot setback until that full drilling has occurred. And that is from the the oil and gas location. I'm gonna get into that in a second. And then the early production phase is 1,000 feet from the working pad surface for you two years after production. And the reason for the two years is that the majority of the production that is going to occur on oil and gas wells anywhere in Colorado is gonna be in that first two years. You're there said that there's a 70, 80% of the production of a well throughout its lifetime is going to occur in that first two years. And so during that time of of intense production and potentially truck traffic and certainly higher pressures, we wanna have those 1,000-foot setbacks honored. Allowing for some waiver in in certain circumstances. Looking at the production phase, there's gonna be a minimum setback of 200 feet from an oil and gas production facility without wells or from one to two wells, three to 24 wells is 350 feet and 25 or more wells, looking at a 500-foot setback. And to talk through the difference between oil and gas location and a working pad surface, this what you see here is the oil and gas location and that is the full amount of space that they need while they're doing the development, the oil and gas development, the drilling and the completion operations. Once those are completed and the wells are in and producing, that location will shrink down to what they call a working pad surface or a production site. And that production site can be a fraction of the size of of the the oil and gas location. And if you were gonna do a 350-foot setback from a working pad surface, it would look like this. Why the difference in the sizes? Well, it's just the nature of of the industry. When you have more bigger oil and gas facilities, it's gonna be more industrial nature and have more tendency to pollute. It also, you know, this is 12, this is 12 wells here. This is one well. It takes up far less space and the potential to pollute is based on the volume of production. This location is not gonna have nearly the potential to pollute as the larger oil and gas facility. Also, larger oil and gas facilities can be reworked. And if you're reworking 12 wells, that can take much longer and expose local populations to that industrial process for much longer than a single well. In the post-production phase, we're looking at 200 minimum setback unless they request an alternative compliance buffer reduction, in which case they have to prove essentially that that location is safe, that it has been plugged in abandoned properly and doesn't pose any potential threat to public health, safety, welfare or the environment. Moving to production protective standards. We're looking at air quality, leak detection and repair, odors, water quality, risk management, emergency response and the rest here. Just to breeze through these quickly. Certainly, we want to have application to existing facilities. And this is something that wasn't exactly stated, but there are certain public health and safety requirements and nuisance requirements that that are also pose a health risk that need to apply to all facilities, not just the new facilities. And so we made that very explicit in in the regulations. Looking at air quality, there's gonna be an air quality mitigation plan that is required, a leak detection and repair plan. Order mitigation plan and requirements that order responses within 24 hours to ensure that 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 nuisance doesn't exist because where there are orders, there can be air pollution. Looking at water quality and water, water report and plan and also requiring some additional testing beyond what is required by the common gas conservation commission and requiring operators to offer water quality testing out to every water well owner within a half mile of that location. A risk management plan is not currently required by the common gas conservation commission, but will be required in the current in those rules as as written, emergency response plan requiring a well-served letter from applicable fire districts, a resource mobilization cash plan, making sure that the fire districts had access to needed fire suppression, which is foam units and have a plan to share those those resources among the area and including probably ultimately with World County. Incident and accident reporting requirements, the noise report and mitigation plan including requiring continuous noise monitoring for locations within a half mile from a residence or school, which is something that was in the current regulations. Fugitive dust control plan and access plan, wildlife plan. Finally, winding up here in 20 minutes. The financial assurance is something that is currently not adequate at the common gas conservation commission. Financial assurances can is woefully short. You can have a blanket bond of, say, $60,000 to cover 100 wells or $100,000 to cover as many wells as you want. And there are certain instances that where people have walked away from those responsibilities to plug and abandon their wells after they've reached the end of their productive life. And they were not able to. They either filed bankruptcy or just walked away from those obligations and the state is required then to plug and abandon those. And there's currently 200 wells on the orphan well list and that could grow in Wyoming. As an example, there's thousands of wells on the orphan well list. And to prevent that, we wanna make sure that they're adequately bonded. That's why there's a $90,000 per well requirement. Certainly, we wanna have adequate insurance and require enforcement inspections and allowing for that to be paid for by the the operator rather than than taxpayers. Existing language allows for and requires the operators to pay or the applicants to pay for review of both their application and anything that happens subsequent. And we wanna make sure that that's really clear in the regulations. And so we've got certainly there's a currently a requirement that they pay a capital transportation impact fee, but we're expanding that to make sure that the inspection fee is also paid for by the applicant. And I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Well, that was great, Matt. Thanks. That's a lot to cover in 20 minutes. I know Matt can talk ad nauseam about this. He's
That's sure.
There's nothing wrong with that. So we're gonna open the floor up for everybody to ask questions and 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 that and really, you know, tap into Matt's brain and you know, this is the direction we're moving with these regulations. It's it's been discussed five, six times with the public. We had several open houses. We've heard from them. They've given us a lot of direction on both in written comment and and otherwise. And the commissioners have heard presentations from Matt and us as well. And they know given us a little bit of direction. So we think we're going in a pretty solid direction at this point. And we're looking for any input you guys might have. So looking at hands raised, I see that Sean Doherty, you have your hand raised. Would you feel free to add your comments?
Thank you, Matt. I'll I'll try to make it brief, but I've got a few things and there's a possibility that I'm gonna get cut off for a minute here when the satellites go behind a tree. Um, back in the beginning of 11 dot 1 dot 1, it looks like we've removed any reference to private property rights. We've also removed trying to minimize adverse impacts. Trying to figure out on 1 dot 1 dot 3. Why are we removing oil and gas facilities to strategically locate where adverse impacts from operations can be avoided? Same with the next one. We're removing minimize and mitigating the extent and severity of adverse impacts that cannot be avoided. Those concern me. It concerns me that we're not talking at all about private property rights and I believe that that opens us up to litigation. Under a little bit further down under county review process, it looks like we're requiring an application to depict elements within the three miles of the proposed surface location. And I'm trying to figure out, is that the norm? Is that what everybody is requiring now? Or are we just requiring more than normal? 11 dot got the proposal will not negatively impact public health and safety. Who is going to determine that? Are there actual guidelines out there about the public health that we've got to worry about from oil and gas facilities? I don't want that to be arbitrary because that can be up to whatever either commissioner or community director there is. And I don't like things that are just arbitrary and can be decided here and there. Under 11 dot 3 dot 2 on location restrictions, I have a big concern with allowing tenants to make a decision on what happens on a property that they do not own. That should be up to the property owner, not the tenants. I think that there's a big problem there. Um, let's see. Under a little further on, there's something about requiring the oil and gas facility to purchase easements from their property owners. I don't understand that. And I don't see, that just seems like an undue burden to require them to purchase an easement to tell a property owner, you can't do things on your property. Um, which all brings me to, um, you know, why are we doing reverse setbacks? Why can we not allow a surrounding property owner to make a decision about their property that either may or may not be negatively harmful to themselves and their valuations? If, if someone decides to build a home within a quote unquote set space from an existing oil and gas facility, and they can't sell that home, that's their own fault. Why is it that we're going to require that they not be able to use that property their way? Um, I have a couple of other things, but I'll just make them quick. Are we, and this might be a question for the county attorney. Are we opening up the possibility for lawsuits if we change the uses that can be used in a specific zoning district? That to say, oil and gas cannot be used in that zoning district now when it could have before. And the owner now is losing out potentially on revenues. Um, and then I guess the last thing that I'm going to say, and I, I um, oh, I'm sorry, fugitive dust control plan. Are we using the same requirements for the fugitive dust control plan for oil and gas facilities as we are for all other uh uses in the county? And if not, why? Um, so the last piece that I want to add here is I'm a little disappointed, and Matt, please, I apologize, don't take this personally. I'm a little disappointed that we chose a consultant who makes a good portion of his money uh going against uh oil and gas facilities. And I believe that that really slated a lot of this to be extremely negative against oil and gas facilities. I would have much preferred to have somebody who was balanced, who did not have a paycheck coming from either side. I didn't want necessarily an oil and gas facility attorney or consultant either, but I would have preferred somebody who didn't fight against them on a regular basis. So those are my points on it, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Commissioner Doherty, um, I, I don't know how to respond to all those questions. There's quite a bit. Um, I don't know, Matt, did you get that written down half of that?
Yeah, I did my best, and I'm going to go back to, to listen. Um, those are some excellent points, and you know, if you wanted to, to take one or two, I, I, I'm not sure that we're going to have time to go through all of those. But
Email them.
So
To email them in.
Could, could we do a response by email?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Well, that likes next hand up, Commissioner Cho. Hit the hand button on your thing, and then I'll keep track, everybody.
I, I don't think I have a hand button.
Okay. Oh, you don't, down at the bottom of your screen?
No, never have. I don't know why.
Huh, well.
Go ahead.
I'm going to let you go real quick, and then we're going to go to Curtis Miller and then to John Barnett.
Uh, my question is, how does this get enforced? So let's just say you've got these uh what I'll call operation standards. Uh, you know, they, they get their permit, and then they um are required to meet continuous monitoring as an example. And there's, you know, odor violations, what, whatever it may be, and there's uh violation of their standards, you know, in stand, in usual uh zoning enforcement is, is a little different. So what action count, could, would the county take? If, uh, you know, they're running, uh, you know, a multimillion dollar rig, it's going to cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars a day to stop doing whatever they're doing that's in violation of their permit. What can the county do to, um, you know, bring the hammer down? What's the plan?
Well, I, I'm going to start, or Frank, do you want to take this? Because I know that you've worked on this as well.
Well, I can kind of maybe start out. I mean, it, you know, there, there's a handful of different things we can do. And one of the things we've tried to structure it to say, and we rewrote, we rewrote the enforcement mechanism provision, and a lot of that was modeled after, after what like, maybe I looked at Boulder, I looked at Commerce City, I looked at a bunch of different, I looked at Weld. I mean, and I looked at the various different provisions and the different codes. And one, one avenue is there's a provision in there for fines between three hundred up to fifteen thousand dollars a day for violations. So that's one way you can enforce it. One way is to pursue some kind of an injunction. One way would be, um, we could, I think, go under the provision in Title Thirty that allows for daily penalties under there. But really, what we want to do is avoid, avoid there being a situation where they don't have it taken care of in the first place. And so we've tried to build in these bonds to make sure that there is enough money to cover whatever comes up. And so we've tried to kind of take a broad-based approach to give us as many tools as possible. But the fact of the matter is, like, like you said, when they're out there drilling with millions and millions of dollars of equipment, if something goes wrong, you know, I mean, there, you probably saw there was a fire out in Arapahoe County last week or something like that. I mean, it becomes difficult. And so that's what, that's the approach we've taken so far. So hopefully that helps answer it a little bit.
Commissioner Miller, uh, you're next.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little shocked and alarmed at all the changes that we had all agreed upon last year um, that are now on this new uh proposal. Uh, what really got me is the uh inspections allowed without um, someone from the oil company or from the property owner being there. Um, I see nothing but lawsuits coming out of that, so I would really, I would really like to see that addressed and, and perhaps changed, for sure.
Okay, Commissioner Barnett. You're muted, sir.
I'd like to ask that Matt Sura's response to Commissioner Doherty's questions uh be emailed to everybody, uh, because I think there's some important information there that we all ought to be sharing. Uh, the second question I have is a little bit broader. There is a ninety thousand dollar bond required for the abandonment and plugging of a well. Did we do any cost analysis? Was there any cost analysis done on what either a median or an average cost of plugging and abandoning a well was? And if so, how close are we to that kind of a number? So uh, these, if, if the county had to take that responsibility on, we might very well be taking it on one well at a time. Whereas a big drilling operator might be able to contract out for a hundred wells at a time or something like that. Um, so there may be a very, kind of a really different range in the cost of doing that, and I just want to make sure that, that uh we've got those costs covered so that county taxpayer doesn't get burdened with that, or the state taxpayer for that matter.
It's a great point, and because there's one question, I, I'm happy to answer. Um, yes, there, this is based on the common gas conservation commission study that was done in twenty seventeen, looking at their own costs in plugging and abandoning uh and reclaiming uh orphan wells over the last ten years. Uh, so this was an average, um, and you, you know, as those numbers change, you know, we could certainly uh adjust that. I know that the common gas conservation commission is going to be taking this issue on and financial assurance rulemaking uh within the next three months. And my hope, frankly, is that, you know, this is not something that we have to do at the county level, that this is going to be taken care of by the state with some adequate bonding at the state level. So because it's just an administrative burden that really shouldn't fall on, on the county.
Very good. Thanks. Great question, Commissioner Barnett. Uh, Commissioner Shattuck McNally, you are now up to speak, and Commissioner Stevens, you're to follow.
Thank you, Matt. Um, with all due respect, I'd like to request that uh planning commissioner Sean Doherty, he went through a long list of, of issues and, and concerns he had, and he would share that entire list with us all so that we can, uh, it was hard to follow. I wrote down some notes, but with all due respect, that's a long list, and I would love to have that um sent to all of us so that we can address those concerns. Thank you so much. Um, I'd like to address one of those concerns right off the bat. That we uh believe that, believe that we should talk about residents as well as um owners because some of those folks who live in um renting near facilities, um, this is an environmental justice issue, and we believe the state is also currently looking at the environmental justice issue. And so this is something that we feel is something we should take a hard look at. And so I want to just make sure that we are aware that it's, it's it's easy for one owner who owns a large complex to have a say, but when you have a hundred residents who don't have a say, we feel like that's an environmental justice issue. So I want to make sure that we're thinking about the health, the safety and welfare of all residents. Since that is kind of, I feel, the, the major North Star of SB one eighty-one is that we're looking to protect the self, uh, health, safety and welfare of our residents. So, um, and so these other things, I could go down the list. But I'd just like to make sure that we have that whole list. I appreciate your um input and your voice in this matter, and I'd like to really um be able to look at all the things that you said, but it was hard to follow the whole list. So thank you so much for sending that to us, um, planning commissioner Doherty. I really appreciate that opportunity to look at everything fully. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Shattuck McNally. Um, Commissioner Stevens, the floor is now yours.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you know, I, I would echo what Jody said about, you know, the residents, you know, we want to make sure that that, that folks are protected. And, and honestly, you know, with many of your questions, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Sura will, will have a, have detailed answers. But, um, you know, we, it wasn't just Mr. Sura kind of making up these rules, right? I mean, he did that in, um, in conjunction with all of us, with the commissioners, with with residents in our community. So, um, the, and as far as his bias, I mean, we wanted somebody with expertise and, and, and I don't feel that he has been biased, and we've had a lot of back and forth on some of these questions. Um, you know, we've pushed back on things and, and asked a lot of questions about setbacks and reverse setbacks. Um, you know, we feel we are within our rights with SB one eighty-one um to protect our residents. And, you know, all of the decisions that we've looked at have been to protect residents, um, the safety and health of our residents. So we know that, um, we're not protecting people just from the best case scenario. We're trying to also protect from the worst case scenario. So, you know, that's how you do, you know, risk mitigation. I mean, you know, when you're looking at it, you know, we still look at a one in one hundred year flood situation as far as, as things go. And so we have to look at some of these safety concerns that we've seen in, at, in, in different areas, whether it's, you know, fires or, um, you know, other, other accidents that have happened that, that put people's um health in danger. And so I think that that's, that's what we're looking at. I think that SB eight one eighty-one gives us the right to do that. Um, you know, certainly happy to, you know, talk about those individual questions that you have. I think we're trying to reach a balance here, but, um, but, you know, I, I think we're trying to take that, the health and safety issues very seriously. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Um, Commissioner Green, and then we'll be back to Commissioner Shattuck McNally.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty. Um, I, I would just like to, first of all, um, I love the idea of uh Limer County taking more local control as, as allowed, rather than having the state make decisions like this. I'm a big fan of local control. Uh, also, obviously, a very big um fan of the emergency response aspects that have, that are being built in. Uh, however, relative to the table uh comparing restrictions, um, I would, I would hardly call Boulder County, even though it's our neighbor, a flagship um representative of reasonable uh restrictions. Uh, I'd like to see Weld County thrown in there as well. Um, I think between Boulder and Weld County, uh, along with the state that you have listed, Mr. Sura, uh, I, I think seeing that comparison for Limer County to take a look at um would help us find some middle ground, or at least um a little more representative comparison of reasonable restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green, and just a quick response on the, that comparison chart, I think. Um, and Matt can time in and chime me. Weld County operates almost exactly as, as the state does. They tend to not want to exceed any state regulations. Um, they operate primarily at the same level as the state, and they call it Vogel over their weld, well and gas um operations. But um they're pretty much consistent with the state. They might have a few areas with emergency management and some of those areas where they um have some higher standards. For, for the most part, they're the same as the state.
That's correct.
Commissioner Shattuck McNally, and then I'll turn it over to Commissioner Falls after that.
Thank you, Matt. Sorry, but I have to jump back in there. First off the bat, I appreciate Commissioner, planning commissioner Green's comments, and thank you for chiming in. I really love having all this input from all our planning commissioners. It's great to hear from you and have your feedback. Um, I do have to say that as commissioners, um, we did ask early on for comparisons, not only from Boulder County, but from Weld County, from the state and from other counties. So, um, just to want to make sure that we assure you as planning commissioners that we have looked at more than one county to look at these regulations. And I've had personal one-on-one co- conversations with many commissioners, even when I just got back from the Colorado Counties Incorporated meeting, I've talked to county, probably six different commissioners from different counties and talked about their oil and gas regulations, one-on-one this weekend. So I want to reassure you that we're not focusing on one county. We're looking at all kinds of counties and what they're doing. Secondly, um, I'd like to talk again, I would echo what, um, Kristen's, uh, my colleague Kristen Stevens said about Mr. Sura, you know, we brought this on because the state, we have to remind everyone that the state, it says that when we have to bring up our regulations to the base of what the state says, that was a lot of work just right there, and there's like two thousand pages, as I understand, of this regulation says that. And to respect our staff and not expect them to work two hundred hours a week, I feel like bringing on Mr. Sura was a great idea and that we wanted to have someone who we felt was had that expertise and has worked with many municipalities and other local governments with this. And so we let staff look at that, and they had their own criteria, and I feel like they brought on a very um well-qualified person who was, um, would be looking at what we wanted and address what we needed, and he's taking direction from staff and from commissioners. So I just want to kind of make that two cents. Then also about the takings issue that, again, I wanted to address what Commissioner Dory had said, planning commissioner Doherty. Um, you know, I wanted to assure you that I have done a lot of reading recently. Um, matter of fact, I don't read for pleasure anymore. I read for commissions in Limer County mostly. And I have read on both sides of the legal um arguments. Um, and, you know, I have read from two different schools of thought and taken that in um, along with other folks who are giving us lots of the feedback about takings. You know, there's always that threatened takings litigation, um, whenever state and local governments consider reasonable regulation of the industry. You know, however, the states enacted major reforms requiring a regulation of oil and gas industry, which is increasing setback requirements to match our increased scientific understanding of the harms that fracking operations can impose on our neighbors. But they also empowered local governments to adopt stricter regulations in order to protect their, our communities. And that, you know, the takings challenges to um new setback requirements really are kind of debatable, right? And so even if they were brought, there, there is debate about whether, what can and cannot be done. But I think that we have to look at, and we can, we can bring up all kinds of studies and, and law things, but I think we have to focus on um that we have been looking at all of that and really taking that all into account. But we have to remind what us SB one eighty-one um allows the local governments to really focus on the health, safety and welfare of our residents. And so I want to just make sure that, you know, that's kind of our North Star for me and uh that we do, do a lot of um looking into private property rights as well as all these other arguments. And we have taken a full comprehensive view on these going forward. And I want to just kind of reassure everyone that we have taken, in my personal, um, I can't speak for my colleagues. I know they have too, but I'm not speaking for them, I'm speaking for myself. But I've done a lot of extra reading and work on a comprehensive look and approach in looking at this from all perspectives, and I want to reassure everyone that's what we're doing. Thank you so much for that time to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner Shattuck McNally. Um, Commissioner Falls and, Falls, and then we're going to go to Frank Howell group.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. And first of all, I'd just like to respectfully, um, I just want to acknowledge that, planning commission member Nancy Wallace has joined us. I, I know, Bob, that's probably your job, and, and I hope you don't feel like I'm cutting into it. But I, I do think it's important to acknowledge, uh, that Nancy has joined us. I think we're up to seven, uh, planning commission members. I hope that's okay, sir. And, uh, the, the next thing, Matt, is I'd like to ask Frank to speak to an issue that I texted him about, a concern that I have regarding email exchanges. I'd like him to go next, please. And then I have a couple of specific questions and perhaps some general, more general ones, if that's okay.
That's great. Um, Frank, the floor is yours, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Kofalas.
Thank you, sir.
Just to clarify, and I saw some, uh, someone on the public, Deb York, had mentioned something about it also. But just procedurally, I think the way to, to approach this in the best way is for, for Commissioner Doherty, with his questions, he can email those. There's nothing wrong with him emailing those to Mr. Sura. He can do that just to clarify what questions he has. I think any PC board member could send to staff and say, here are some questions that I have, as long as they're written out in a, in a document. What we don't want, because we have to watch for the open meetings law, is we can't have a debate amongst the board and everybody talking back and forth. And so we need to be careful about that. And I think the way to deal with it is to just, i- if there are particular questions that a, a planning commissioner has, they need to email those to staff and then staff can bring those. That will be a public record. That email to staff will be a public record and available to anybody. And then whenever the staff has an opportunity to do that, some of it's legal and some of it's just how do you do it in a way that makes sense, right? And so legally, you can't have two or more of you discussing anything, uh, public or unless it's in public. The other part is, it's just hard to get everybody on the same page. And so the way to do it, I think, is PC staff, PC members could send an email to the staff. And then during an open meeting, Mr. Sura can respond. And I think we have an open meeting set for the 21st, which is when we're going to have the more in-depth debate just with the planning commission about this topic. And so at that time, we can run down that list of questions and make sure we've addressed everybody and had that conversation. I think for now, we just want to have, have the opportunity in this public meeting to get the concerns on the table to the extent people want to express them. Hopefully that's helpful.
Just as a quick note, I have emailed my questions to Matt Lafferty. Matt, if you could email those out to the planning commissioners and the camp, board of county commissioners, as well as Mr. Sura, that way everybody can know exactly what I asked. Thank you. I'll do. Commissioner Kofalas, floor is back to you.
Yeah, thank you. And, uh, again, Sean, thanks a lot. And Frank, I, I just want us to be very careful about not crossing the line with the one meetings requirements. And, um, I, I think we want to avoid a, an email exchange that, um, on, on these issues. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that folks were, uh, thinking about that. With that in mind, I, a couple of things I wanted to ask. First of all, uh, Matt and Leslie and others, uh, I, I have some, um, uh, grammatical recommendations, which I'm not going to get into tonight. Uh, a couple of typos that I might have seen, there's some grammatical things. And, and perhaps, Matt, you can follow up with me. I don't think we need to get into, into that this evening. Uh, that's the first thing. The second thing is regarding, um, some specific questions. In section 11.2.4, oil and gas review criteria, public conservation lands, where it talks about no net loss to certain values, I'm wondering why we haven't included recreational values. I, I don't know if I should go through my questions, then I'd get into a Sean Doherty situation. But, um, I wonder if, if that's a question that folks could answer. I, it seems to me we, we may want to include recreational values in addition to natural values and some of the other things that are listed in that public conservation land section.
It's an excellent point, and I'll, I'll take notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I will continue and, and try to do this in the proper way. Let's see. Yes, in, 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 in section 11.3.3, which is pretty robust on air quality related matters, uh, in, in subsection B, ambient air monitoring, it talks about baseline sampling. And I, and it, it says that baseline sampling should, should occur within 500 feet of the proposed site uh, for ni- 90 days prior. And my question there, Matt and others, is, uh, what's the science behind that?
Uh, this is, um, there, the sciences that you want to have as breadth, it, the more breadth that you have in your baseline sampling, uh, the better the sample is going to be, the more representative of the, uh, conditions that nearby residents are going to experience. Current requirements are only, uh, three days, um, for collecting a baseline. And the science, the scientists that, that I worked with, um, or during the REG 7 rulemaking at the Co- department of Public Health and Environment, uh, stated that that just wasn't enough because there's just so much variability in wind. As you know, uh, in Laramie County, you know, we have winds that circulate from the east to the west, to the north, to the south, and, and almost a, a cyclical manner. And making sure that you, you've got a representative sample of all those conditions is, um, the theory behind that. And I, I, you know, we can go less or more. But that was, I thought, a good balance as to, you know, representing, you didn't want to, to require too much of the, the operator that was going to be overly burdensome, but at the same time, you needed a representative sample.
Thank you, Matt. That's very helpful. Have other counties done a 90-day, um, baseline sampling? Or, or what does the state recommend or require?
Yeah, as I said, you know, the, the state only requires a three days, um, sampling. And, you know, so it is considerably more than that. However, um, you know, it doesn't say exactly how they sample and whether that sample is taken once a week, you know, once every day. Um, it could be done in a way that I think is going to be, you know, something that, that would not be overly burdensome to the industry, but it's going to give us, um, a better breadth of, of a baseline, you know, that is going to be more reliable and more helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Matt. Matt Lafferty, shall let, may I continue or this time allow, or how do we do this?
Please do. We're at seven o'clock. Uh, we have two items left. I, I think that, uh, those two items will probably take, uh, 20 to 30 minutes each. So, um, if we want to be out here between eight and 8:30, um, we still have about 15 minutes.
Thank you, Matt. I'll, I'll continue. And again, my questions are, um, I mean, I'm, I'm generally very supportive of the direction we're heading with all these oil and gas regs. But in the spirit of, of thoughtful, you know, deliberation, I, I'm asking these questions. Um, regarding, uh, uh, in air, in the air quality section 11.3.3 and the, um, continuous monitoring, it makes reference to, um, a, a, a trigger level. And it says that the trigger level is defined in terms of monitoring levels, but I, I couldn't see that. Where is that trigger level defined?
Uh, the trigger level is going to be defined by their monitoring plan. And that, uh, needs to be prepared by a third-party consultant.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Moving right along, air quality mitigation plan. Uh, consider the cumulative impacts to existing air quality, uh, it, 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 impacts to planning and, and planned and existing oil and gas, um, et cetera. I'm very supportive of that, but I'm just curious, how do we do that?
Well, that's really the importance of the baseline, um, air quality monitoring. You know, you're going to have a sense as to what is there prior. And, you know, if you were to do monitoring in, say, an area that's very industrialized or very, uh, right next to a very congested road, um, that may be an area that, you know, the, the residents are already experiencing a, a burden of air pollution and you wouldn't want to add to that or exacerbate it. I, I don't believe that that's going to be the case hopefully anywhere in Laramie County. But, um, there could certainly be instances in the future, in the future of Laramie County where that would be a concern.
Mr. Sura, would, does the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, isn't it also, their objective to start taking various samples throughout the year from all these operations that are, you know, doing sampling and to create a database at the state so that people can be looking at the cumulative impacts of oil and gas across an area or a region? Um, so that will be a one more piece of information that we could look at?
That's right, Matt. This, um, language really mirrors what's already at the common gas conservation commission in many ways. And, uh, the current requirements of CDPE, uh, the air pollution control division, um, and frankly, legislation that just passed yesterday, uh, that is going to require more monitoring, air quality monitoring, uh, in places, particularly those disproportionately impacted communities.
Thank you both, Matts. Uh, just a couple more questions and I, and you are helping me to, uh, discern all of these, you know, these complex issues. My next question is moving to a section 11.3.9, which deals with, um, incidents, incident accident reporting. What is the difference between an emergency, which is cited in the previous section? Uh, and, and there are all these provisions, um, and a, uh, reportable safety event. Is it, is it a question of magnitude or?
Yeah, and it, that's a really great question. And right now, the, the current draft, um, and the draft as is presented to you today really requires, um, us to look at the common gas conservation commission for a lot of the terms that are used. Uh, and this is one of those instances where, um, you've got a, a term that is found at the common gas conservation commission. Um, but those reportable instances could be, um, uh, near miss. That is, you know, something that was reported by, uh, an employee that, you know, there, there was a near miss. You know, that it wasn't an accident, but there's a safety issue that needs to be resolved. And that, again, is, is going to be provided, um, in these, these regulations. And, you know, if we need to, to clarify that or put a definition section that would make it easier, um, that would, we can do that as well.
Thanks, Matt. Just a couple more things, colleagues. If you're Chairman Cho, are you okay with me continuing a little bit here?
Certainly. I think these are great discussion items.
Thanks. Um, just a, two more specific and a more general question. Excuse me, regarding, um, I think it's section 11.3.12, you know, on the dust, dust matters. A fugitive dust control plant, uh, subsection A, uh, shall be contained, um, to the maximum, what is it? I'm sorry, maximum extent, uh, practicable. That seems like a bit of a subjective term. How, and I've, I've seen that in a couple of other places. And I know we, and I've seen that in legislation, uh, how do we, um, you know, how do we make that a little bit more defined? And also enforcement, you know, I think Bob or somebody brought up the enforcement issue.
It, it's really an excellent point and something that I've wrestled with. Um, there are a number of ways that we could do it. The reason that the language is there is because, um, best management practices are changing all the time. And this in, industry, you know, is known for changing its practices and improving its practices monthly at times. Um, this dust practice is a good example, and case in point, where for, uh, three years ago, well, more like, six, six years ago, uh, fracking dust, um, the dust that comes from the hydraulic fraction process was a real problem until they came up with, uh, a solution for that, a technical solution for that. Um, so if it's practicable, my definition would be that it's being used somewhere by the oil and gas industry in another, in another place. So, mirror, uh, if, the, the fact that it's a best management practice that is being utilized somewhere else means that it's practical, practicable.
Thanks, Matt.
I think I would add to that, that I think that the term practicable and a lot of the usage that we use it throughout our code and other codes is to say, you know, for instance, you might want to control dust and, and live in an area where, where wind is just inherent to the location. And, and so you can't, you can't prevent the wind from blowing. So you're going to have to deal with a certain level of dust because of that. And so the factor is you've got to account for that and you try to control how you're impacting or increasing that dust, um, in those situations. So how can you maximize the, uh, the level of impact that you're going to create to growing that dust problem? That's my understanding.
And, and if I might just jump in, th- this is language actually that was acceptable to the oil and gas industry in another location. And the conversation that we had at the time, and the reason that we can't, we landed on the word practicable, is they said, you can't require us to do, um, the most mitigation possible, which is where we started, because that would mean going out there and putting asphalt over the entire area because that's going to control the dust. And that's one, a surefire way to do it, but that's not really what you want. And so we, that's, uh, again, language that, uh, I think is acceptable to the industry. And ultimately, um, the industry knows what's practicable. And so long as you have somebody that understands the industry, uh, somebody on your staff is going to also know what's practicable because they know what's a best management practice and what is being done in the industry.
My last specific question, then a more general one, then I think, uh, Sean has his hand raised. And, and in subsection E of that, um, uh, dust section where it refers to the, um, it refers to, uh, the county health and engineering departments. I, I don't believe regarding what, what material or what, what, what can be used for, for dust suppression, what, what types of water or other materials can be used for dust suppression. I don't believe that's an accurate description of our, um, of our, our county. We don't have a county health department. We have a county health and environment department. So I, I'd like you to look at that, Matt Lafferty, and make sure that that's an accurate description of the departments that we're referring to that would have authority over this section.
Great point.
Thank you. And, and then my last sort of general question, and this is really coming from, uh, last night. And, and you'll get more detailed input from our environmental and science advisory board. As you know, Matt Lafferty, uh, there, there's a subcommittee and they've been monitoring all this. And they have very, very specific, um, feedback on all the various provisions. And, uh, and, and we had that presentation last night, the ESAB, the Environmental and Science Advisory Board. Um, but one of the big picture questions was, uh, you know, it, it's, it seems like when we passed the oil and gas regs in April of 2020, there was a provision in there that once the state finalized its regulations, we would go back, which is what we're doing now, and determine how do we get up to the same, at least the same level as where the, the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is. Uh, we, we're going above and beyond. So I guess one question I have is, it, it's a two-part question. And that is, uh, on a percentage basis, how, how much above it and beyond the, um, what the oil, you know, the Colorado oil, the state regs require, how, how much above that are we going in all these different areas? And do we have the resources, you know, to make sure that we're, um, you know, carrying out these perhaps more stringent regulations?
I think that that would be a question I'd like to answer at a, at a later date because I, I think it's a bigger question, uh, and an important one. Um, but the breadth of that question, because there are some many different areas where we are going beyond the state. And I could give you, um, a detailed description as to why I believe that that's necessary to protect public health and safety. But, um, I, I think it would, it would take too long for this meeting.
Matt Sura, thank you. And, and again, please understand that I, I'm generally very supportive of the direction we're heading. But I feel like I have a responsibility to ask these questions, uh, because I think we deserve answers.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kofalas. That was, that was very thorough. Thank you. Um, I see that Commissioner Doherty has his hand up and, uh, Commissioner Cho also has his hand up. So we'll go to Commissioner Doherty.
Just two quick comments. First of all, I do want to say that I believe staff has done a heck of a lot of work here. And for the majority of it, I can see this working for, pardon me, oil and gas companies. I can see this working towards helping keep our community safe, still the private property rights, but that's my piece. That's me. And you guys all know that. My only main goal here is to try to keep a level playing field and make sure that this is equitable. And make sure that this is equitable for all involved. You know, if we're going to go ahead and restrict a, a, one industry based solely on. Uh, the prevailing winds, if you will, at the time, I, I'm disconcerted by that. This would feel like if we were going ahead and if a ditch company, and as we all know, like railroads, ditch companies have. All the rights in the world, but if they decided to unilaterally just extend their setbacks. And deprive people of being able to use their private property, people would be up in arms. Because this is oil and gas, people are not as up in arms about it. And I just want to try to keep. As level of playing field as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doherty. Uh, final word of the night on oil and gas. Then go to Bob Cho.
Two very short comments. One is related to requiring. A surface owner to approve of a reclamation plan to plug and abandon the well. And I think that. You know, by the time they're plugging and abandoning, these are existing in place and we want to encourage that. And they may not have a, a relationship with the landowner. And so because we want to encourage a safe and. Safe plug abandonment of our wells, might want to rethink that exact language to allow for maybe some sort of. Reclamation plan without surface owner approval if, if necessary. The, the second is a little more broad and I'll apply my, my comment to the. Air quality, air monitoring and, and what happens, what we're looking for there. I'm a big fan of objective criteria and, and this kind of regulation necessarily. Uh, can't be perfectly objective and with air quality, uh, really requires some expertise. So let me just tell you, I don't have it. And I don't have any recommendation for you on what it should be. But the example you used, Mr. Sura, which I thought was a really good one because it wasn't how I looked at it. It was, okay, you got a little, a really congested. Highway. And so we're going to do air monitoring and it's already really high. Should we have to, uh, should the people who live nearby have to be, uh, you know, object, uh, have these additional. You know, air quality issues thrust upon them. I was thinking like where I live and where most of Laramie County is. Pure, pristine, wonderful air. I believe that likely it is lower. Where I live than a lot of places because I don't live right by the city. So that makes it kind of like, okay, well, are we, you know, are we going to have somebody come in and say, no, the air is too pure here already? We don't want to sully it. And then somewhere near the highway say, oh, no, this is too dirty. We don't want to make it worse. I would recommend that there be some sort of, um, you know, objective standards or say, well, this is what we consider to be an objectively reasonable amount. And I don't know that we have that or that we're going to have that expertise. Hopefully the state has those regs or, or could. But I would recommend that if possible, that we identify that in some capacity, just so it's more reasonable. Otherwise, I do think you get into it. You know, uh, an equitable, equitable equity and justice issue like we're talking about where it's kind of like, well, we're pushing this all over. Uh, next to the, um, you know, the, the tenants, because they are the ones who can't afford to. Buy their own homes and they're living in the apartments. And anyhow, that's just my idea. I prefer objective criteria overall. I understand you can't do it everywhere. I think in air quality, that's really, um, that's a big one right now. And I think maybe that deserves a little bit of. Effort to identify that because the, the proposed draft just says. What does the oil and gas experts, air expert say is appropriate? And I don't know what that looks like. That's just my thoughts. I think everybody did it. Staff and Mr. Sura, I think you all have done a fantastic job. Thank you.
All right, um, Matt, do you have anything else that you want to add to this? Or do you think that you, we've got. A good information that we can come back and provide a response to when we go to public here?
Yeah, I've got plenty to chew on. Thank you. Thanks to everyone.
I, I'd like everybody to, to know and, and especially we've got a few attendees online tonight. On the fifteenth of this month, we will be having an open house for the public to provide us comment on the current draft. Um, and what we're looking at from the public is for them to take very specific look at our, our current proposed. Language and to give us their input on. How it can be improved from their perspective. Um, hopefully not just a bunch of comments that, um, we don't like this or like that, but hopefully some clear suggestions on. On how we might improve the regulations from their standpoint. So at least we can. Point those out to you and we do give you a packet of information later on in July. So. That's coming up on the fifteenth and then the public review period is open all the way until the twenty eighth of this month. So. Plenty of time for the public to give us comments. So we're looking forward to that as well. Um, and then we'll share all that information with you in July. With that, thank you for your help tonight, Mr. Sura. And we appreciate all your hard work. Now I'm going to turn it over to Matt Goble and his team of, of planners. And we're going to talk a little bit about some other code amendments that are going on, things that you've been hearing about over the last couple of months or years. Tonight, we're going to talk about parking. We're expanding the parking regulations and landscaping and inside landscaping. There's some discussion around buffering. So, um, we're going to let Matt's team cover a presentation to us and then we will again open it up. Public comment, uh, or, or up to the comment of the, of the planning commission and the board of county commissioners so that we can. Uh, make further refinements. Uh, Mr. Goble, the floor is yours.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. LaFerty. Uh, hello again, everyone. Good to see you all. Uh, just a very brief introduction for me tonight. And then Austin and Gabby, you're going to really cover the bulk of the, do the, the bulk of the substance. Uh, we've got a revised calendar for you, uh, that shows the overall, uh, you know, different trains that are moving forward with, with the phase two updates. And, uh, we don't need to get into all the details. You, you know that the sign commission, uh, the sign regulations were, were forwarded. And, and recommended for approval by planning commission. That's going forward for formal adoption on the twenty first. Oil and gas, we've talked about. The one thing that I wanted to talk about that's different on this slide from what you see is, is the Estes Valley regulations. Upon further conversation with Leslie and Matt, uh, we're probably going to be aiming for a mid-August meeting with the Estes Valley. Uh, committee, uh, looking at the updates to the regulations. And then bumping these dates for the planning commission hearing and V C C into the September timeframe. So that, that piece, the Estes Valley is probably going to bump by a month. Development standards and the livestock, the ag issues and the housing issues that we've been talking about and will continue tonight. Those are still expected to be for the September adoption rounds. Uh, and then finally ten forty-one, uh, that's going to be the third agenda item tonight. You're going to hear more about that. I just wanted to acknowledge that our colleague Elizabeth Garvin did join the call after we did the introductions. And she's now, uh, now that she's been freed from the, from the work on the sign piece, she's going to step over and help us with the edits to the ten forty-one. Piece to make sure those stay on track. And so she'll be sticking around for that conversation after we finish. Uh, the conversation on parking and landscaping. Before we move on to substance, any questions on the calendar or any comments from Matt or Leslie about this overall scope for phase two? All right, let's keep going. Austin, take it away.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so today we're going to be talking development standards and we're going to go through this stuff pretty quick. Because a lot of this material is going to be the same as last time we talked about development standards. Just a couple of weeks ago. So we'll try to focus on what's changed since last we talked. So this is one area that's changed. Um, the applicability threshold. So this is the table that was adopted in phase one. If you look under minor expansions and changes of use. And then go down to the parking and landscaping rows, you'll see that each are determined based off, um, site-specific criteria. We flushed out that criteria. That's what's new here. So for off-street parking and loading. The general rule is that for a minor expansion and for a change of use, you have to comply with all of the parking requirements. But the director may waive compliance. Under certain criteria. And that is basically when it's very similar in character and scale. And there's no adverse impacts on the parking and loading needs of the development. Likewise, for landscaping, general rule is that for changes of use and minor expansions. You have to comply with all of the landscaping requirements. But the director can waive that can, can waive compliance. If certain criteria is met, basically when no adverse impact to appearance, quality, or the use of the development. So I just wanted to flag that for you guys, um, that those are two new things, um, to do with the applicability of these two sections. As it relates to minor expansions and changes of use. So really just fleshing out the criteria of when the director may waive compliance. Let's move on to the substance. I'm just going to focus on things that are new here since last we talked. We have a slightly new organization with refined headings. I'll show you what that looks like in just a moment. We just talked about the applicability. Um, we're continuing to tweak the standards for best practices and we think they're in pretty good shape. And the big change here for parking since last time we talked is the electric vehicle charging standards. So I'll talk about that in just a moment. Before we get there, here is the new organization for parking. You'll see it's. A bit condensed from last we talked and we tried to make the headings a bit more succinct as well. So consolidating more material and trying to make this as succinct as possible. Nothing new for minimum vehicle parking required, but I just wanted to briefly talk about this change because it's, it's a big one. So again, just overviewing what we talked about last time. Currently, um, these are written as recommendations. They're not requirements. And there's one recommendation for each use for the entire county. As in, there's no tailoring based on different areas of the county. Moving forward, we're proposing two different standards. One requirement for the urban character and urban character areas and G M As. And then for all other areas of the county, we're carrying forward that current recommendation. Here's how it plays out in practice. You can see the requirement in the middle column there. And when possible, we try to base these requirements off the current municipality, um, requirements throughout the county. So this is based off Loveland's requirement. And the recommendation, as I said, is carried forward from, um, the current code. So nothing new from last we talked here, but I just wanted to briefly go over that one last time. This is new. So we talked a lot about the E V charging requirements. Last time we talked about development standards and we made, um, quite a few changes based off that conversation. So we are now moving forward with not requiring that a charging station be provided. Just that the electrical infrastructure be provided so that a charging station could be installed at a later time. So that's a pretty big change from what we had initially proposed. Charging station not required, electrical infrastructure required. And additionally, we're tailoring this based just off large parking areas. And that's kind of a work in progress. We're trying to think through how we can further tailor this. To just get at areas that are not only large parking areas, but those where longer-term parking is expected. And that's all we have for parking. Um, maybe we'll just take a couple of minutes pause here before we move on to landscaping and see if there's any questions.
Looks like Commissioner Doherty has his hand up. Commissioner Doherty?
Just a simple question and thank you for key.
You just went out on us.
Yeah, I missed that.
We'll come back to Commissioner Doherty.
Yes, can you hear me?
Uh, can you repeat all that? Uh, we didn't hear you.
Sorry about that. Um, so thank you for leaving the page up about the electrical, the infrastructure. For the charging station being installed at the time of, uh, building this. Do you mean just the conduit or do you mean all the electrical connections? There could be a huge price difference between the two. And honestly, if I had my druthers on this, I think the hardest thing to go and do after the fact. Is digging everything up to put in the conduit. But sliding the, the electrical through the conduit after the fact is much, much, much easier. And can be a much less financial burden for somebody developing. I could see this happening not only on the larger lots, but also on the smaller lots. And being able to say, hey, right here, all you've got to do is plug the wires in and put up the charger when you're ready to do so.
That is a great point. The intent was the latter, but we will be sure to clarify that in the draft.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Doherty. Commissioner Stevens and then Commissioner Shadik McNally.
Yeah, one of the questions that I have is, you know, thinking about like some of the new, um. You know, things coming down from the state, especially with, you know, electrification and E Vs. Is that, I mean, you know, I, I think that they'll want, be wanting us to look at land use code and standards in this realm. So have we heard anything about, I mean, when you first proposed that, was that a best practice? And, um. And, and do we feel like there's going to be anything from the state that makes it such that we should actually. Go back and include the, the E V charging stations for, um, you know, parking thirty or more spaces?
The requirements today are pretty all over the place. Um, Boulder and Pueblo counties are, um. Pretty up there as far as requiring charging stations and where they require them. But there's also lesser requirements like Summit County. And so, um, it's really a sliding scale of what counties are doing throughout Colorado. I know that doesn't really answer your question.
Right. I, and I would just add to that, Austin. I, I think it's, it's, it's a little bit early to really say that a best practice has emerged in this field, Commissioner. It's still, uh, it's, it's still kind of shaking out. And, and certainly cer- certain, some counties like Austin has mentioned. Have started to step into this field of incentives or regulation and even more municipalities have. But I think we haven't really seen enough action here to, to say it's a best practice in our experience.
Because I'm, I'm thinking thirty, thirty parking spots is, is probably a pretty decent sized company, right? I mean, um, I guess I'd like to have, you know, some more information on sort of the, the costs of what that would be. But I'm wondering, I mean, maybe, and maybe Commissioner Kofalas, having met with the E S A B, might have some, some background on this. But, uh, you know, as we look to adopt, you know, climate-friendly solutions in our communities, uh, it's, you know. We may want to relook at that. So that I'll, I'll wait to hear from everyone else.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Shadik McNally?
Thank you, Matt. And I, um, Commissioner Stevens kind of asked one of my questions about. Um, you know, what do we, what do we know and what are other counties doing currently? And do we need to kind of, you know, look at this a little further? But I also wondered, um. You know, with those charging stations, with the infrastructure and stuff, does it say where they should be? Because, you know, some of those locations of that, um, might be. Kind of incentive to, to have those in a premium spot for those folks to park. And I don't know if we ever go that in-depth with some land use codes of where they say they are in the parking lot. Um, I know, uh, my friends who use that in the SS Park parking garage. And how those stations are kind of in a premium spot. And I know several folks that come up and. You know, park their cars up in the Estes Valley parking lot and then use the bus to go up to the park. So I don't know if there's, um. Although also used for, um, just private or is this also for other, um. Public spaces. I'm just curious if we can even do that or not. And just, just some other questions I have. There seems. Like this is a, an area that we, we need to do a little more exploring. Just, just my thoughts just off the top of my head.
Great, great comments. Thank you. Um, and, and I think as Matt said, I, uh, Sarah said and, and Austin talked about. You know, this is an emerging technology and, and it's new to everybody. And, and certainly the amount of electric vehicles that are coming onto the market and onto our roads these days is expanding. And I'm sure that we're going to learn more over the next, um. Two to five years about where they should, these stations should be, how many they should be, what frequency. And so, um, what we're trying to do is accommodate it as best we can. I think at this point, without trying to predict what we think will be the right answer. And then hopefully within, you know, the next year, if we need to come back and update the regs because some new better information comes out. We certainly can update things at that time. So, um, just to add that to sense. Commissioner Falls, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Matt. I'm wondering, uh, the parking requirements waivers. Uh, can they be applied to accommodate affordable housing? So it, for example, if you're, someone wishes to build a manufactured housing or mobile home park. home park, manufactured housing community, sometimes there's a need to adjust the parking requirements off street. Would that apply here? How does that work?
Austin, you want me to chime in on that? I can. You know, typically, Commissioner Kafalas, the way the county has used the parking standards in the past is that they were a recommended standard. It's what we desire you to do. We expect you to put two spaces per household and things like that. When you get into unique situations such as mobile home parks, things like that, we know that those present bigger challenges. And of course, because they're not going to be a rigid requirement, it allows staff and the director to look at these things from the perspective of reasonableness and appropriateness. And so, you know, in a mobile home park, spaces along the street might be looking different. There might be some on-street parking versus off-street parking, some other allowances and that, in order to make it easier to accommodate in those situations. So yes, I think the direct answer is yes, the director would have the ability to work through those issues with staff as we go through those types of applications.
Thank you, Matt. I think you've answered my question that we have flexibility in, in trying to incentivize affordable housing by addressing some of the parking requirements. Thank you.
Commissioner Wallace? Your turn, Wallace. You're muted.
I wonder if there's ever a place, and this might be the one, for some language that talks about the changes that might come up that would be mandated? Because, you know, there's the whole thing, everybody complains about having six different plugins for six different phones. And I think there's a, sort of a move afoot to try to make these things more, not, not let everybody do a separate one. In other words, have this, have the same kinds of plugins, the same kinds of things. And if we could, if we, instead of having to come back in and change the language of the, of the code, if there's a way to add something that says, we recognize that these things may come in, and that the director can man, or can include more restrictions or more requirements as those things become, it's sort of like the earlier question of what's more common and what's known in the industry.
Right. And so today, the way the language is written is for a standard EV charger to be installed. And you're absolutely correct. Standard EV chargers can work with any EV, but most companies like Tesla and Rivian create particular charging devices that do not work with other vehicles. So that is a really important thing and something we're going to continue to think through.
Great. Commissioner Cho.
So along the lines of what Commissioner Kafalas was saying and incentivizing affordable housing through maybe allowing for a little flexibility with the parking standards to accomplish that or to assist towards that goal, you know, I think that if you want to incentivize, you know, EV charging, then it would be appropriate to incentivize it without requiring it, and, you know, for, to put, to put in the actual charging station. So I don't know if that's something that we can do, just to basically say, well, you don't have to put so many, so many spaces in, because these are light, very likely going to go in the GMAs and urban character areas, and they're going to be requirements. And so if we can incentivize them and say, okay, you get a 20% reduction in required parking if, you know, for every charging station you actually install. Or maybe just apply that to places like offices where if the, if the, if it's primarily designed for employees that are going to be there for eight hours versus, you know, you're running into a Burger King, it's not really all that helpful to plug your car in for, you know, seven minutes. Anyhow, just an idea.
Great observation. Yeah, we'll consider those. Commissioner Miller?
Yes. It's so onerous on the landowner or the parking lot owner to put up these charging stations until the, the manufacturers of these electric cars standardize their plugin systems. It just doesn't make sense to demand or to create a requirement for them to set any of these up until it's somehow regulated. How many systems do you want to have there? And if I have the wrong car, do I have to drive to another parking lot? It just doesn't make sense to require this at all.
So I, so I should be clear that a standard charging station will work with any EV, but a specific company charging station, like Tesla's charging station, only works with Tesla cars. So the difference is that the Tesla charging station will charge exponentially quicker than a standard charger would. But the standard charger will still work for that Tesla, will still charge it.
But I also wanted to just step in, though. We don't want to get into the current, you know, differences between the different technologies, because those are, those are hard to understand now, and they're going to be different in six months and very different in a year. And so we're not trying to infuse any of those technological differences into these requirements. We specifically said that you don't require a charging station. And really, all this is saying is that you've got to designate a spot on that parking lot where the, where these electrical, the EV appropriate spaces would be, and create the physical space for those wires to go. And then the applicant, the property owner, can figure out which wires they want to put in. They can, they can go with something that's more generalized for a variety of models. They can go with a more Tesla specific thing. But we're not trying to dictate which technology they use or even get into that conversation at all, because it's going to change.
I agree. And I really think, like Sean said, put in the, put in the conduit, but don't require the, the whole setup. Even putting in the capability for it is still going to be expensive, because you've got to have the proper amperage and, and everything available. But yeah, I, I think more incentivizing the landowner rather than requiring is a very, very important part.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Barrett?
Thank you, Matt. I would just echo everyone else's comments and encourage the staff to be proactive about incentivizing and adding the EV charging stations. When I think about the auto industry and some of the announcements of General Motors saying that in the next 15 years, 100% of the vehicles that they sell are going to be electric, I would hate for any of these new developments to be all of a sudden ripping up their parking lots a few years down the road. And then also, I would think about maybe prioritizing it for residential multifamily or multi-use areas versus commercial areas where people might have a shorter stay versus people who would have longer stays are more likely to charge.
Great points. And I think that that's, that's really where that whole bottom area of, of the slide on the screen says, you know, that we want to, we want to probably focus any of this stuff into areas where long-term parking is expected, you know, where you have a parking garage or an office complex or a business that has employees there for extended periods of time, where it makes sense to put it in, because the short stays, as Commissioner Choade said, people aren't going to want to, you know, just plug in for 30 seconds and then move on, or three minutes, or whatever the timeframe they're there. So, yeah, I'm sure that the electrical vehicle charging stations component of parking is going to expand and change over the next few years. So we'll keep a close eye on it. Commissioner Stevens, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. But I'm thinking about the employee trip reduction plan that's going to be in place for, with, for employers over 100. That's going to really require some reduction for, for people to either use electric vehicles or carpool, or, you know, have people work remotely. Something like that could change the amount of parking business needs. But also, you know, there again, the, having the EV stations in places like that would help those employers, you know, hit, hit those mandates that, that are going to be in place after that, that, that rulemaking happens for the, for the trip reduction plan. So that, I think that there are several reasons why we should, you know, consider requiring it. And whether, you know, there again, it may make sense by business type more than it does for number of parking spots. So I think that that's, but I do think that it's something that's going to increasingly come up. And I think we, you know, we should probably, it would probably be forward thinking of us to accommodate that kind of infrastructure in some way.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Mr. Miller, you have another comment?
Yeah, well, I have another question. You know, we're, we're trying to incentivize private landowners to, when they're putting in a parking lot, or, or someone, I think Jordana mentioned, housing parking lots to have these electrical charging stations. Is Laramore County planning on implementing this program to their parking lots, to the courthouse and other places? Any plans?
I'm not aware of any at this point. I, I don't know what, what's on the horizon for the county on those issues. I do know that there are certain facilities that are already out there. For instance, parking garage downtown here already has electric vehicle charging stations in it.
For the employees, for the company, for the county car?
Everybody that pays to utilize the parking lot.
Okay.
To utilize.
And I would submit that, that is in our discussion. We are discussing those things, and it aligns with our, our work regarding our Climate Smart Laramore County framework. So while there haven't been any formal discussions with our facilities director, I have informally suggested that we need to start looking at putting charging stations at our, our public buildings.
I think it would be the attitude of a lot of landowners if, if the county actually applied their own principles.
I agree. And one of our basic principles is that we serve as a good, as a, as a role model for what we are suggesting the community needs to do.
Yes, I'd like to thank Planning Commissioner Miller for his comments, but I, I feel that I would love to have his feedback and have him read our Climate Smart Laramore County document and know that we are currently working towards that direction. And I can name several areas where our county is trying to be a model for the entire county with our remote learning project and program for employees, our move toward portable childcare and probably childcare center. And I could go down the list of where we're trying to be modeled for the rest of the county. And one other area is Commissioner Kafalas mentioned is our Climate Smart Laramore County program. And we are, like Commissioner Kafalas said, we are having those conversations and looking with our strategic plan to implement some of those things to help be a leader. And so I encourage you to take a look at that plan. And I'm sure Commissioner Kafalas and Stevens or myself would love to have that conversation with you, Planning Commissioner Miller. We appreciate those comments. And, and yes, that's something I think that we're all looking at.
All right. So moving from parking, we're going to go into landscaping and talk a little bit about our landscaping buffering and screening regulations. And for that, Gabby Hart, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Matt. So here is the new layout for the landscaping, buffering, and screening standards. It flows from the more general standards and then to the more specific and technical standards. And just as a reminder, in the Phase 1 code, we really just carried forward existing content with relatively few changes. Next slide. So the first thing we wanted to highlight was the applicability and minimum landscaping required sections. A few changes to highlight, we carried forward the exemption for single-family detached cabin and duplex dwellings from most of these standards. We introduced a new process called an alternative landscape plan, and that allows the director to approve landscape plans that don't meet certain minimum requirements using a set of specific criteria to review those. There are newly proposed minimum total landscaping requirements for each of the districts, only within the urban character areas and within the GMAs. And that's to better align with the municipalities. And so you'll see that that's represented in that table as a percentage of landscape area out of the total site. And then finally, this draft proposes an exemption from the parking lot and the building perimeter landscaping requirements for any development that's in the conservation and agriculture and rural character areas. Next slide, please. And another major topic that we heard about and discussed during Phase 1 of the update was water conservation. And so the new standards integrate more water-wise landscaping requirements throughout the general and specific landscaping standards. And some of those include prohibiting artificial plant materials, limiting turf and other high-water plants, requiring low-water plants in areas that don't have permanent irrigation, and also limiting impervious service, surface in parking lots. And then also, the Laramore County plant list has been reviewed and updated, and it includes hydrozones for each of the recommended plants, trees, shrub types. And a hydrozone is a measure of how much water a plant requires. And so this helps guide the grouping of plant types to be near other plants with similar water usage, to make sure that efficient irrigation can be designed and less water is wasted. Next slide, please. And then the other major topic is adjacency and buffering. So this includes standards for buffering and screening between properties, and also standards for fencing and walls used for both landscaping and screening purposes. So using the residential agriculture buffer that we discussed and established in Phase 1 as the framework, this draft expands and applies those three buffer options that I'll describe in the next slide in more detail, to the wider range of development scenarios that would require buffers. So a few of those contexts to highlight that are recommended in the draft, all new non-residential structures proposed adjacent to a residential use, any drive-through facility adjacent to a residential use, and then any combination of uses that the director determines might negatively impact the adjacent property based on the use that's proposed. And the standards make it clear that any required buffer is placed and maintained on the lot proposed for development, not the existing adjacent use. Next slide, please. So just as a recap and reminder, these were the three types of buffers that a proposed development can choose from. So first, there's an adequate existing buffer, which is exactly what it sounds like. The existing physical features like topography, vegetation, trees, plants, et cetera, are sufficient to adequately buffer the adjacent site from any potential impacts. Then next is a constructed buffer, and that's essentially what the current prior land use code considered a landscape buffer. It's a new buffer that includes a combination of new vegetation, screening, fences, or walls. And then finally, the enhanced setback buffer, that does not require any additional landscaping if the separation between the proposed use structure and the property line of the adjacent property is relatively significant and large. And then that distance can be reduced if there's a combination of the other two buffers proposed. So the draft proposes with requirements for all those buffers based on a few potential development scenarios. But those numbers and when and how they should apply are still being further refined and explored. Next slide, please. And finally, we just wanted to highlight one particular thing about fences and walls section. We proposed a new definition for agricultural fencing, and then it exempts that from all standards except those related to wildlife protection. In the current code, agricultural fencing is exempt from standards, but there's no definition for what agricultural fencing is. So you'll see the definition here. So you'll see the definition here is that it's any fence in the conservation and agriculture rural or mixed-use charact- or mixed-center, sorry, character areas used to control or corral livestock, stock, deter wildlife from crops, or indicate the borders of a lot of, that maintains an agricultural use. And then that brings us to the end of the landscaping and buffering standards. So we can open it up for any questions or comments.
I'd like, I'd like also point out Gabby has gone through our suggested plant list requirements. We have, we've had for a long time a booklet of plant lists that we suggest that people use in their landscaping, this drought tolerant species. And she's gone through and reaffirmed that those are appropriate landscape materials and trimmed that up to make it appropriate with current understanding of drought tolerance species. So that's great to have that as well. So. Hands up, it looks like we have Jody Shattuck McNally, followed by Commissioner Doherty, followed by Commissioner Barnett. And I see, Bob, you found your hand. So we will have you come up after Commissioner Barnett.
Thanks, thanks, Matt. I just, let me, sorry, I'm in, I, I forget, sorry, people. I, I just got back from being gone for a few days at the county commissioner conference and my dogs miss me. So they're in my lap. So that's why I've had my camera off because I figure you don't want to see my dogs climbing all over me. But I was curious with this agricultural fencing, and maybe I missed it, or maybe I'm not reading the whole thing clearly. But when you talk about to control, confine, or corral livestock, deter wildlife from crops, and indicate borders, have we looked at or thought about windbreaks or weather breaks for some of these properties that use trees or fencing to help kind of protect against a snow or wind or, you know, snow drifting? Is that something that we should think about? I know that's something living out in the rural part of the county. You know, it's some of that fencing and some of those trees are used for other things to, other than control or confine wildlife and livestock, but actually weather and trying to protect properties from snow, drift, and wind. Is that something we should consider? And maybe I missed that part, and you guys can help me point me in that direction. I'm just curious if that's something we should add.
Certainly, that type of fencing, from my understanding, wouldn't be prohibited in Laramo County. You'd be able to use it as a fence or, or whatnot, or an obstruction, let's say, in the event of snow, things like that. And it would only require a permit if you go over a certain height for fencing in the county. I think the idea here was to, to identify what, what agricultural fencing is because it's exempt from any of the rules to be used in the sense of providing landscaping barriers or those buffering.
Great. And so there is no, like, height restrictions if some of those trees grow tall? And I just want to make sure, you know, those, so those property owners are length or anything like that, so they can do that to help kind of give that buffer for their properties. Okay, I just want to make sure that those property rights, property owners have that ability. So thanks for clarifying that, Matt. I appreciate that.
Sure. Mr. Doherty?
I will make this quick. The only complaint I have on this is requiring people to use specific type of vegetation. I think that there could be a way to incentivize it, maybe working with the water providers to incentivize it with better rates or something along those lines. But to me, it's like the difference between someone who wants to drive a Yugo and someone who wants to drive a Mercedes. If they can afford the Mercedes, they should be allowed to get the Mercedes. Or to water my plants, I should be allowed to have my plants. That's my only problem with this. You guys all know that I've always been against mandates and for incentivization. So I'd love to see some sort of incentivization in there instead of mandates.
And, and I think if you look at our plant list, it's relatively extensive. It's pages and pages long. It's not meant to be exclusive. It does identify plant materials that are, that we exclude that are invasive species such as Russian olives and things like that. Keep in mind, these standards that we're talking about here only apply to development applications when they're being proposed. So I'm proposing a housing development, or I'm proposing some sort of a commercial development or things like that. If I'm a single-family property owner or somebody that owns a piece of land out there, I'm allowed to put what landscaping I want on my property without getting landscape plan. So that would still give those property rights, you know? For instance, I have a yard. I want to plant Bermuda grass. I plant it. There's nothing that says that I can't do that because I'm not proposing a development. I'm just living in my household and I can plant those materials as I see fit and want to water.
And Matt, I appreciate that and I agree with that. But from the developer's standpoint, instead of saying you must use XYZ, why not, if you use XYZ, we can incentivize you by allowing slightly larger lot sizes or something similar?
Yeah, we can look into some of those things. I, I understand where you're coming from. It's just, you know, you start to incentivize, it, it's not to say that you're incentivizing it. We require landscaping in a certain quantity and this and that. And, you know, I, I believe that you'll probably find that most of the trees and landscape materials that are out there on the market today fit our requirements. So, but we'll look into it a little more.
Matt, just to piggyback on this, if we are going to either incentivize or require the lower water use vegetation, is there a possibility of working with these water providers and allowing them or asking them to reduce the required amount of water per lot? I mean, why can't we have, instead of a full acre foot per year per lot or tap, why can't we have indoor use-only taps or taps that are much or greatly reduced so as to help our region conserve water?
Great points, great points. We are, you know, and this is a little bit off topic, but, you know, the county's received some grant money that Leslie applied for through DOLA and the Sonoran Institute for us to start down the path of talking about a water plan for the county. And why we don't regulate water and we don't control it all is certainly going to give us the, lay the groundwork for us to go out and start working with these water districts and other groups to try to define how water is going to be used in the future. And, and I think hopefully through that, Sean, we can address some of those, those issues you raise. So great, great comment. Commissioner Barnett, and then Commissioner Cho, and then Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Matt.
A couple of things. One is, I, I really think that the right place to start is with the approach to hydro zones, because that really is the low-hanging fruit. It's important for everybody to realize when we talk about landscaping and water at all, that 50% of the water that's treated in Colorado is used for outdoor irrigation. And then in fact, in usually the first or second week in July, something like 70 to 80% of all of the water that's treated over the period of a week or so is used for outdoor irrigation. And that hugely affects the capacity that's required in water transmission lines and also in water treatment plants and a lot of other facilities. It, it requires them to be much larger than they would actually be if we could reduce the amount of water that we put on our landscaping. So there's a huge public benefit to being able to do this. In a previous lifetime, I actually worked on this. And so this is near and dear to me. I really want to, as I said, it's important to start with the hydro zones, but I did look at that plant list a little bit. And while I know there's a lot of work in it and it's, it's good so far, there are some mismatches between the botanical names and common names. And so that needs to be gone over at length by somebody who actually has experience working back and forth between common names and botanical names so that those get right. And also, one of the banned species is fractionous Pennsylvania, which is only green ash. Actually, we need to ban all of the ash trees right now because we're probably going to lose every ash tree in all of our communities, and they will probably be within extinct within 20 years or so. So we, we need to be aware of that. It's important, and it takes a lot of negotiation with the water providers. And even if, if they were part of Laramo County's jurisdiction, it's still difficult to do. It's, it's very challenging to work with the water providers to get them to agree to reduce dedications, water dedication requirements and, and potentially tap fees. And in a lot of ways, because they have to deliver that water every day, whatever is demanded. And so there's, there's a lot of work that has to be done on that side of the equation. But on this side of the equation, I think we've got a good start from a regulatory perspective. And I think the county leading this effort by starting it on this side of it is a good way to lead down the road to eventual cooperation with the water providers. Your comments, Commissioner Barnett. Mr. Cho, followed by Commissioner Stevens, and then Commissioner Barrett.
I agree. Good comments. I have two minor comments. And it was going through there pretty quickly, but they were talking about the prohibition on artificial plants and I think artificial turf as well. And that was under the water-wise section of your presentation, Gabby. I could have missed it, missed that. But, you know, it seems to me, if we're talking about conserving water, artificial plant materials prohibited. You know, I assume that turf limited to high-use and high-visibility areas, you know, means like watered turf. But, you know, I'm a big fan of artificial turf and seems like artificial plants could be appropriate. Anyhow, another question I had, that's just, that was just really a comment for your consideration. The other question I had related to the, the buffers, I think it looks good. The one thing I'd want to recommend, if it's not clear, is if they're, if we're relying on an existing buffer as, as being adequate, it shouldn't really matter whether that buffer is on the property being developed or not. And I'm specifically thinking about, you know, some property owner who's got two rows of mature trees, you know, windrows, or maybe there's a ditch right there that clearly has been there since, you know, about the time the railroads went in and therefore will be the, about the time that the sun engulfs the earth. And it was a good buffer. And so it shouldn't really matter if we're relying on an existing buffer that it is on the property being developed. Just another comment for, for your consideration. I think overall, this is, you know, much more detailed than I would have expected, but I think it's a good job.
Thank you, Commissioner Cho, Commissioner Stevens, and then Commissioner Barrett.
Yeah, I just, I, I, I would like to keep these regulations in place for the water-wise plans. I think, you know, there again, we are in the midst of a really devastating drought. We are, you know, struggling with, you know, potential loss of water because of climate change. I don't, I, I, you know, it would be great if, if it would be okay to just incentivize people and that would work. But I'm not sure that we're in the kind of environment where we can afford to, to do that, frankly. I think that, you know, and, and as John said, I'm glad John knew that some of those names of the plants weren't, were matching because I will tell you, when I got to the list of plants, it was a little daunting to me. And so, but, but it certainly seems that people have a lot of, but I do know that, what, you know, about the ash, the ash trees, and I, and I agree with that. And then, you know, it seems like people have a lot of choices within the realm of these water-wise plans. And, you know, I do think that, there again, I do think this is the way the county can set, set a good example as well. But I, I absolutely think that this should be required and not just be an incentive program.
Very, very, very good. Thanks, Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Barrett, you are up.
Thank you, Matt. And I also wanted to thank Gabby and the staff for including more of the water-wise language in there and requirements. To kind of echo what everyone else has already said, the water conservation subject is going to be very important going into the future. And to what Commissioner Cho mentioned about the turf, I would potentially recommend artificial turf as a consideration. I know there are some other cities on the front range who are doing incentive plans around installing artificial turf. And so it is something that's being considered in other cities around the front range. So just something to look into.
Very good. Thank you for those comments. And along the time, along the lines of artificial plant materials, I really like palm trees. I think I'm going to put a few in my yard. They look really cool. They might look odd in the snow, but. Commissioner Miller and then Commissioner Barnett.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about the whole, you know, indigenous native plant species or, or low-water species. I, I think we discussed this years ago in the Kector area. You know, the, I can't remember the exact verbiage for that area, but if you look, it's a beautiful development that was designed by the Laramo County and is a great plan. But what hog that place is. And I am so glad we're finally looking at plants that don't require that much water. And so I'm all over this. I think it's wonderful. And I'm really, sorry, guys, I'm opposed on every level with artificial turf. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Barnett. You're muted.
I'm muted.
As, as they used to say in the hearing room, please turn on your mic.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Miller. That artificial turf is not necessarily the way to go. One of the things that we, one of the reasons for doing landscaping, particularly in higher-density areas, is to mitigate the urban heat island effect. And that cuts down on the need for air conditioning, the need for energy use and electricity going into summer afternoon peaks for cooling. When landscaping will often do that for us, just the evaporation that takes place off the live foliage of plants cools us several degrees and avoids the absorption of heat that you can get from artificial turf.
Great points.
And other hard surfaces.
Great points. Thank you, Commissioner Barnett. Well, it looks like everybody's had a chance to speak and raise their hand and put it down. So great work to Gabby and Austin on these items. And Matt, your team. I think we, we've got some good direction on making some final renditions on this. And so there may be an opportunity where we come back before September and just lightly brush on these. But you may not see these again until we get to the adoption phase because I think that they've been pretty well-rounded and, and gone through. And that will let us focus on other things between now and September. So. Thanks again, Matt, to your team.
Sure, Matt. And we'll make sure to focus in the final presentation material, adoption process, on, on the things that change and really try to bottom line the feedback that we heard at these conversations and how it's reflected in the final drafts.
Awesome. Great. Thanks again. We've got, it's now 8:11. I think that we could probably get this done by 8:30, quarter to nine. I know that the, the next topic's 10:41 and it can generate some ideas. But let's turn it over to Leslie, who's been working on that topic for the last couple of months. Leslie?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. And this, this piece of the code is moving along on a slightly slower track than some of the others. As you saw in the schedule, we're aiming for an October adoption timeframe. So we're really just getting started. And you do have a discussion draft in your- A discussion draft in your materials that starts on page one twenty three. But a lot of the notes and comments in there are really to, I think, prompt some additional input so we can keep doing work. We've done a fair amount of comparative analysis and work that we shared with you at the meeting in April. And you gave us some feedback back then, and there's lots of information on the webpage too, on the Larimer.org. Planning, Land Use Code twenty twenty, and there's a ten forty one permit. Dedicated page, I'll actually go to that in just a minute, so. So I don't have slides, I was just going to do a bit of a refresher of what we covered at the last meeting and then I'll jump into the draft itself and we can walk through that and. I may tag team a little bit with Frank, we've, we kind of collectively as a staff effort put some comments and notes in this draft and then. As Matt Goble mentioned, Elizabeth Garvin, who's been very busy with our sign code for the last couple of months, will shift gears. And help us work on some of the further drafting and refinement on this piece as well as we move forward, so. We're very happy to have her also. So with that, just as a quick refresher, on April twenty six. I think it was the twenty sixth, the last time we talked with you, our last work session, we. We did some introduction, actually it was in May at your last work session, sorry, we did. We did the overview of the ten forty one regulations, what's in them, kind of what's their purpose, we talked about the schedule and the public process. For this project and we provided some comparative information in your packet then that looked at. Five different other counties and our regulations and particularly the areas and activities that we regulate. We talked about the statutory authority or the ten forty one powers that allow local governments to. Identify, designate and regulate areas and activity activities of state interest and just. As a quick reminder, I mean, these are types of projects that tend to have a larger. Interest, they might cross multiple properties, maybe even multiple counties. Or they may touch on areas that are of interest that might have sensitive resources or that sort of nature, so. And we're we're limited by the state as to what types of activities and areas we can regulate. So we did talk about last time what types of areas are authorized by the state. And those include four different kinds, so there's mineral resource areas, natural hazard areas. Areas with historical, natural or archaeological resources that are significant or areas around key facilities. And so you had provided some input at the last meeting with interest in. Considering adding natural hazard areas and considering adding those historical and archaeological. Areas as well, and also key facility or not key facilities, I don't believe, so we did not include that in the draft. And then we went on to talk about the activities that were authorized to regulate by the state and there's a number of those. If you remember from the chart. Many of which we do regulate, some we don't, and we heard some input from you. With some interest in considering adding arterial highways and interchanges and collector highways. Other ones that we already regulate are. Mostly public utility types of uses, pipelines, that sort of thing, water domestic sewer systems. So I'll go into the draft here shortly and we'll look at those specific activities that we currently regulate and what we suggested adding. So since that time and since that input, we've modified the schedule a little bit, we had, we've. We've added some information to the webpage and then we prepared this June third draft that you all have and so. We also have a a public virtual open house tomorrow at four thirty and I looked this afternoon and there's about. Fifteen people who are registered for that, so. We're starting to get a few more public inquiries about what is this project, how can we participate, how can we provide feedback, so. I think we'll start to get more interest in that sense too, so tomorrow's that first opportunity to hear some feedback from. The public and get some ideas, and then we do have time scheduled with the commissioners on Monday on the fourteenth to continue this discussion. If we need it, unless you feel like you got what you needed tonight, so we'll keep taking comments on this draft through basically. Close to the end of the month and then we'll prepare a new discussion draft for your discussion in July on the fourteenth and. Aim toward a late July public open house, is what we're trying to do and kind of the way that we've. Worked on the oil and gas regulations, we'll be doing some iterative drafts and inviting the public to provide feedback at different stages and. And we can do some additional refinements. So let me pull up the draft now that you all have, does anybody have any questions about kind of where we've been or. What we touched on last time before I jump into the draft itself. I don't see any, okay, so let me see if I can successfully share my screen at this time of night. Okay, are you seeing? The draft, okay, I'm seeing a couple head nods, so that's good. So this is what shows up.
I know it shows full page there, if you could maybe expand it a little bit, it's relatively.
How about that?
That's a lot better, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, so this is what, well, more or less appears in your packet, this is actually the version that. Appears on the public webpage, so it doesn't have the same, all the same numbering at the bottom of your packet. But I'll just walk, I'll just scroll through some of these sections. And I can't see all of you on the screen now because I've lost that ability, so just chime in if you have a question or. Anything that needs clarification as I roll through this. So we just, we noted here that this is not a complete draft, it's really a discussion draft and it's really. Almost like an annotated outline so that we can start to collect some additional comments and feedback, so. For instance, we'll definitely need to come back and take another. Turn at adjusting and revising some of these early sections of the draft, like the purpose statement and so on as we work our way through, so. We didn't want anybody to get alarmed that, you know, we hadn't done something to parts that might need attention, so. We just flagged the idea that there's some more work to be done, so on page two, this is where the draft. Starts to get into the activities and the areas that we currently regulate and so we're working off our current draft. That's article ten and. A couple of the sections that we currently regulate actually are a bit redundant with oil and gas regulations, so we were suggesting that. We may want to remove these and make sure that these types of topics are covered in the oil and gas regulations. If they're not there already, they'll be added to that section, but just so that an applicant isn't confused about which sections of the regulation. Might apply to them, we thought that that might be a good thing to clean up. And then in this next section, we noted that the. The way that we've regulated domestic water and sewer transmission lines is actually a bit more limited than what. The statutes allow, the state allows us to regulate the whole system. In the county, when we wrote our regulations, we took a more limited approach, so we could actually expand on this section. And do so by removing the exemption from the section and then if we wanted to. Exempt smaller projects, we could do that by pipe size or. Volume or something along those lines, so so that's something we'd be interested to hear feedback on if you have. A thought on how we might amend that section potentially, so as we move on to page three, then you'll see. This is where we've started to add some of the new areas and activities. The two activities that we don't currently regulate that are authorized by the statute that we heard feedback on. And then potentially these areas of state interest and with a bit of a caveat around these in that. We would have to actually define mapped areas for these types of activities and so we're still. Looking in to see what our mapping. What we currently have mapped or potentially adopted or if the state has maps that we could reference, but we did hear. Your input in the last meeting that this was something of interest, so we've we've plugged these in here as something to continue to look at. If that's of interest, so I may stop here and just see if there are any other comments or feedback on. Activities in areas at this point before we move on to talk about some of the other sections of the draft.
I'm looking to see if anybody's hands are up and Commissioner Cho. You were the first to the line and so you get to go and then Commissioner Stevens.
Thanks. You know what I would just say is I I would support what sounds like a recommendation, Leslie, on that section ten three eight. You know, removal of those exemptions, you know, it's it's a system, these are system wide issues and so it makes sense. It would all be included and subject to these these ten forty one regulations. And then, but I also agree that it makes sense to. To exempt smaller systems and because, you know, they just have a substantially lesser impact. And I don't know, you know, I don't know if it's best to do that by, you know, by by how big the pipe is or how much wa-. Water or whatever they're moving, I don't know that that makes as much of a difference, you know, one of the things that. One of the things that that well county does, and I'm only throwing this out there because I actually think it's pretty reasonable, the the effect. Of moving water out of the community versus water within the community is a pretty substantial difference and that might be one way to differentiate. Between, you know, because if you look at the the applications that have come in the in recent years, I mean, like. There were concerns and there are water rights, certainly water rights that have to be accounted for, but, you know, the impact. That needs to be addressed could be, can be very substantially higher for water moving out of the community, so just an idea.
Thanks, Commissioner Cho, those are great comments. Commissioner Stevens.
Yeah, um, and thank you, Leslie, for for talking about the purposes and intense kind of section. I do, I would like to see more, you know, detail in that, kind of in looking over like the Boulder County one, there's a lot of detail on. You know, kind of our general philosophy, I guess, on on some of these projects and and what we'd like to see and so. I'd like to see more of those elements included in the purpose and intents. You know, just a little more detail and I've, I think I've seen it in others, but at this point I've looked at so many ten forty one. Plans, I can't remember which one would have had that, but I think kind of spelling out some of those concerns that we have around. I mean, you know, I've our communities, it's not just environmental concerns, it's sort of economic concerns and view shed concerns and some of the other. You know, recreational, you know, wanting to make sure that we're kind of protecting all these, our current economic system. As well as our environmental system. When new projects are proposed and so I think that that I I like spelling some of that out in the purpose and intense. Section, so, but I know we have, you know, some time to give some more input on that too.
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful and I think when we get to the criteria section, you'll see why we said let's put a placeholder in for that. Because I think that will be driven a lot by where we land with the criteria, probably in some of the later sections of the draft.
Yeah, I think absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Wallace and then Commissioner Shadick McNally.
I just want to state my approval or agreement with this. Arterial highways and interchanges and the collector highways, I think that's an issue that we that we're going to see more of with. All of the money that's going to come down for highways and so forth, and I think that would be an area that we we would want to be able to talk to have some impact with.
Thank you. Commissioner Shadick McNally?
Thank you, Matt, sorry, my dog's going to bark here in a minute, so just forgive me for the loud noises. I, Commissioner Stevens kind of covered what I was going to ask, I think that it would be great to add a little bit more into those sections and. Leslie, I I'm glad you clarified that and I'm like grateful to hear about that and glad that we're making some progress here. And would love to, I know we, I would remind me, did we ask for some? Did you send it? And I just have forgotten being out of town for a couple of days at the conference, did you send us some except bars or some other examples that we were looking at? Or a side by side comparison, I, did you send that to us yet and I just, and I've just kind of lost that in my emails or where are we at with that?
Yeah, that was actually provided in the May materials and it's on the webpage now, so. And I can pull that up for reference tonight if that's helpful too, but we did do some comparisons on the areas and activities that. Various jurisdictions regulate.
I remember we talked about that and. Thanks for reminding me of that, so I'll go back and look at that, like I said, it's trying to get back into town today and shift gears. So I appreciate this comment, so I was wanting to go back also and make a comment about the sections you talked about. Switching out from the oil and gas regulations. Where would the flow lines and the gathering lines fit? Does it fit in more in the oil and gas regulations but also fit in this ten forty one, because I know there's no current kind of. Regulations on any of that, so does it fit, which one does it fit better in?
I might refer to Matt LaFerty or Frank, because we just had this conversation with Matt Surra, who's not with us any longer, but. We'll make sure there's a home for each of those that we can regulate in the right place, but Matt, go go ahead.
Yeah, sure, um, you know, there's, there's really different types of lines that are used in the flow line procedures, there's. There's flow lines that are used by the operator, taking oil and gas from their their facility to their tank. And then there's a switch off and it goes into different lines, so some of them are are larger lines and so. We talked a little bit about whether or not some of the interstate commerce type lines that we get running across the county that might go into. Other jurisdictions or other parts of the state or maybe even Wyoming. Might be worthy of looking at at the ten forty one, but for the body of most of this, it seems. The special review process offers just as much credence to reviewing these things as does the ten forty one. For us to look at and so we think that, you know, having one place for the industry to look at for a set of regulations. Rather than two places and maybe them saying, oh, well, we didn't see it in that other section and they're halfway down the path of. Getting some other approval somewhere else would be best to keep it all together and keep it focused on those things.
Will we make a reference to it and just this that, you know, just in case they do look at the section first referring to the other section or. Is that something that would be?
I think at this point, we're suggesting that it just gets stricken out of here.
Okay.
Oil and gas regulations contain everything to do with oil and gas and we monitor it under that set of regulations.
And then I was, well, you know, driving along the highway and stuff today and looking at. All the other infrastructures going in under some of these new highway construction and seeing some of the new lines and. Pipelines and transfer lines, I don't know what all those little wires and stuff were for, I'm sure lots of things. When we're looking at increasing broadband access and doing some of this with this new. I'm saying new with our strategic goal and these new opportunities coming down the line, is there anything that we should think before thinking as we're looking to. Address that digital divide and metal mile that we need to address to help us. Before thinking so we don't have come up to something and say, oh, wow, that needs to be addressed, right, are we, you know, with those. Connections and things we're looking at. I'm just wondering if that, is that belong in this section with some of those fiber or pipe, you know, I know these are pipelines and stuff, but. I I don't know where that fits in the code, if we're looking at some of those connections and partnerships and things, does that fit? In a different part of the code or some of that fit in here with some of those infrastructure, so that. Stuff that goes in the pipelines or along the the roadways and stuff as we go forward, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Matt.
I was gonna say, you know, when when we talk about infrastructure and stuff, I think the intent buying. Ten forty one in the past was was when we're talking about significantly large infrastructure, that high impactful type stuff, you know. The laying of of cable lines and doing some of those things that are typical to our development proposals and whatnot, those are all integrated as. As pretty minor impacts because they're getting installed with development and whatnot. It's when you're getting into those substantially larger. It's when you're getting into those substantially larger infrastructure systems like high state highways versus putting in a local road. You know, you don't want to stymie too much of the infrastructure improvements by running them through too many processes. Because it'll just make it more and more difficult for things to get accomplished.
That's exactly why I was asking that question. Just want to make sure that we're making sure we don't have too many barriers up in front of some of those projects. So thanks for answering that.
Yeah, and some of those are also addressed through master license agreements or other mechanisms to work with the providers. Anything else on the activities and areas section, things that we should look at or shouldn't be including here?
I don't see anybody's hands popping up right now, Leslie. I know you can't see them on the screen, so.
Yeah, I actually figured out how to stretch it out so I can see most everybody now, I think. So you learn something new every day. All right. So I'll carry on to the next section. So on page three, we did some small edits on the exemption section. These were mostly kind of cleanup, housekeeping things, so I won't go through these in detail. This section, we did, we did think that we needed to do some clarification on some of the vested rights pieces because we have projects that are in process and there's sometimes confusion about what applies and when. So there is some suggested cleanup and we'll probably continue to look at some of these sections just to make sure that the language is clear. So I won't touch on this in detail, but I can certainly answer questions if you have it. There was some redundancy, so there was a few suggested edits and cleanup in that section. Moving on to sections, ten point five. Again, there's some language from the statute that talks about guidelines and how we adopt guidelines and regulations. So again, we added some language just to try to be a bit more consistent with how the statute reads. Now that we have an opportunity to do some of that work. Moving on to section six. This is a suggested clarification again in the section ten point six two, where in the past, there's been, I think, some, some murkiness around the idea that other, other reviews might be something that we could rely on. And we have done that in certain circumstances. We just want to be clear that that's appropriate. So there's some suggested language in that section as well. In section seven, the appeals, this is something that we intend to probably do some further work on in the next draft to make sure that it's clear that the appeal process really only applies if an applicant feels like their activity is, is not really a designated activity. The way our current section is written, it is, is posed that an applicant could propose an appeal on the basis of saying that they meet the other criteria, they meet criteria and essentially kind of waive the process. So in our read of this and talking with Frank and his team, too, we thought this is probably something that could, could use some clarification in terms of what the, the real appeal process should be for. So Frank, do you want to add anything to that or is that good enough for now? Just to say we've got more work to do there.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add other than we need some additional time to look at that.
Yeah.
Just going back to the pipeline thing, really, I don't want to reopen the entire conversation. But one thing to just put in kind of everybody's minds is there's different sorts of pipelines and there's a federal regulation for interstate pipelines. And so that's, those are big, big pipelines, you know. So some ways people do it, sometimes it's by the size, how the diameter of it, some of them do it by how pressurized it is and how much pressure the pipes are under. So again, I don't want to go necessarily back into that conversation, but there are ways to distinguish sort of what I would call a ten forty-one pipeline, which would be a bigger, more intensive pipeline from maybe a lower level local pipeline. So anyway, that's just two cents on that.
Okay. Thank you. So moving on to section eight. Again, there's some just language, some cleanup language. And we were thinking that section C probably needs a bit of work also. It's just created some confusion in the past and can probably stand to be clarified. So all of these review procedures and procedural pieces, we definitely intend to look at in the next iterations and drafts. But we just flagged a few things for now that we know will need some attention later on. Many of the requirements about how we do noticing and how we hold hearings and how we schedule hearings and timeframes and things like that are guided by the state. And so we don't have a lot of latitude on those. So we're not really suggesting any changes at this point in terms of the process or the noticing in these next sections. Until we get to section nine. And then we did want to clarify that the board of county commissioners might determine at a public hearing that if there's sense that there's not enough sufficient information provided, we may continue the hearing as the county. So that's something that just could bear some clarification as a procedural item. So that brings us to the criteria section. And this is where we probably have the most feedback and input tonight. And so I think it's, you know, we've had some conversations in the past that our criteria were fairly a fairly limited list and that they were ambiguous in some cases. And so it's helpful to make them more specific and remove some of that ambiguity. And so we've started down that path and looked at some of the other jurisdictions that, that have these criteria and started to include some of that more some, some more specificity around the criteria. So we clarified sections around property, property rights, permits, approvals, mineral rights and so on. Not impairing property rights of others. Making sure that there's general conformity with our master plans and comprehensive plans. And then one of the areas where we can certainly add a lot more to our standards and either in the standards or in a technical manual, and we've seen it done both ways with other jurisdictions, is in a lot of these environmental, natural resource areas to minimize the impacts there and to be more specific about impacts on air quality, surf, surface water and, and so on. You can see the list here, financial guarantees and so on. So we've started to add some of the topics. And we would anticipate that this section probably could be, you know, better organized and probably fleshed out as we move forward. But we wanted to not go too far down this path until we had a chance to check in with you and just see what topics are important and of interest to you. And does this strike you as starting to head in the right direction? Are we adding too much? Have we missed some things? And so that might be a, a good point to, to stop and take some feedback. I won't go through all of these in detail. I think you have them in, in your packets on those pages. I'll just add very briefly, too, that we also anticipate in the next step adding potentially more specific criteria for certain types of projects. And that's something that other jurisdictions have done in their regulations also. And, and so that could be that we would add more particular criteria for these types of activities that you see in the list here. So if that's of interest to you, too, we can start to pursue that. So I see at least one hand up.
Yes, Commissioner Shattuck McNally. And you're muted. We're not hearing your dog.
Thank you. Sorry, trying to keep you from the dog yipping. Appreciate that. Thank you, Leslie, Matt. And Leslie, this is great to see such progress and all the information. Could you go back, scroll back down page ten a little bit more with the? Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Yeah. So I was wondering about these, we're going to expanding that F. One in red, you're saying not expanding F, correct? Are we going to look at wild, I see the wildlife, wetlands of the current areas? Are we going to look at like migration corridors as well? I had a conversation with the gal, actually, I just remembered she was going to give me a sticker on the tarantula migration path. Are we looking at, in which I hadn't thought about there, have down that county, they have to look at that migration path. So I wonder if we had wildlife corridor, corridors or migration paths, should we be looking at that as well? And then is view sheds something that we should talk about in any of this? And is that something that belongs here? And I, I don't, I mean, just conversations I've had over the weekend, I'm just wondering about this. I did talk about this with some other commissioners at some of the counties I've been looking at at their ten forty-one regulations. I had some one-on-one conversations, just asking them some questions. Thanks.
Thank you. And I think those topics do fit within this outline here.
Absolutely. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, so I think we have a good start here on, you know, some of the environmental issues to look at with regard to criteria. I, I like the idea of, and there again, I, I probably need to go through some, some more of the ten forty-ones. But I like the, the, like Row County talks about a project not degrading our agriculture, their agricultural activities. So I mean, that, that's something I think would be really good to, to add to ours, since, you know, we want to protect those agricultural lands. I think that something about financially, you know, not being a burden to the county. I think that that, that kind of language I've seen in other ten forty-one. So I think, you know, a project that wouldn't be a, you know, financial burden. So I think really taking a good look at sort of the numbers, you know, like clearly these are usually big projects and people have the right financing and the right background to, to finish a project. But you could find a project that, you know, where somebody went out of business and now you've got, you know, half a pipeline in somebody's backyard that's not, you know, working. And so I think financial feasibility of, is, is something I think that, you know, would be, would be good to put in there. Another thing that, you know, not degrading it really any sector of the local economy, I think that is good. You know, not, not just kind of keeping that to agriculture, but including other economic opportunities that, that are in the county. Let me see if there's anything else that I, I mean, preserving cultural resources and historical structures. You know, I think that, that, that's really important as well. I think I've seen language around like hazardous materials and, and not creating any kind of release of hazardous materials. So I think that, that that's an environmental issue. So I'm sure that there are more that I'm not thinking of. But those are some of the ones that that, that I guess some, some extensions. So kind of some are, some fall under that environmental, but I don't think environmental, I mean, I think environmental is one of the, one of the criteria we should look at. But I do think like other economic health issues in our community are, are something else to look at, too, as well. So those are just some of the ideas that I have. I'm, I'm sure I'll have more. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. That's helpful. And some of those are actually in there. I know it's a little hard to read this messy draft. We did touch on hazardous materials and local economy and financial feasibility. They're not particularly well organized right now, but at least they're, they're sort of on paper.
Well, then I apologize that I didn't see those. But yeah, those, I'm glad, I'm glad we're including those. I think that those are really important to include because there again, I think that there, there, some of these big projects can have, you know, can be financially detrimental to the county and could leave us with a big price tag that we would have to figure out how to fix. And so, you know, we, I mean, clearly with oil and gas, we looked at that and saying, you know, if, you know, you need to have this ninety thousand dollars because we're not sure if you're going to be around to plug and, you know, plug that well at the end of. I mean, that could happen with any kind of project. So I think really kind of holding folks responsible for those big projects. And, you know, being financially responsible for those is, is important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll just add to that, too. A lot of counties have a financial guarantees section. Later on, when you get to the compliance and guarantees section, and we have not started that, looking at that piece or drafting that piece yet. But that is something that we could look at more closely and, and start to move toward including.
Well, I don't see any other hands up. And I think that that was really good conversation, great presentation, Leslie. And good comments. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. I'm glad Commissioner Cho Flo flew all the way back from his vacation to spend time with us. And I hope that Kristen, that you enjoy the balance of your vacation. It sounds like you're just getting started. So enjoy your time off. I know you, commissioners are very busy. I don't know that we as staff have anything left, so I will leave it to Commissioner Cho and to Commissioner Close to wrap up the meeting.
Well, I'll just say that I think that this was a great discussion. And I think that we, I, I think that we are pretty close on some of the things that we looked at. And, and I look forward to seeing what comes forward in the future, especially on the, on the ten forty-one. Obviously, there's a lot more work to do there and we're just at the beginning of that timeline. I'm really appreciative of staff and our consultants and everybody. I'm just thoroughly consistently and thoroughly impressed with the people's faces that I'm looking at as I do twice a month. So thank you all for your efforts.
Or false, anything else?
Just to, I echo Bob's comments. Express my extended gratitude to, to planning staff, the planning commission members, you're all volunteers, and certainly to our, our consultants. And, 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 you know, tonight, I, I just think there was really good constructive dialogue. And I'm really glad that, you know, even the little nuances of, of the botanical names of certain plants are not accurate. I'm glad that we have folks like John, John Barnett that can spot those things or have the time to go through that big old list. So well done tonight, good work. And we'll just keep moving forward, folks. And I wish you all well and please stay, stay, stay hydrated and stay cool, as they say.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thanks. Good night, everyone.